Member Higgins are all in attendance and everyone's preparing to vote using their laptops tonight. Would ask our student representative, Pack, to lead us in the flight suite.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and eternal.
Also like to ask member Pack if he would read the land acknowledgement.
We acknowledge that we gather here today on the traditional lands of the Denina people of the upward Cook Inlet. For thousands of years, the Denina people have been and continue to be the stewards of this land. ASD is committed to diversity and inclusion and is with honor and respect that we recognize all indigenous people who live and learn in our community.
Thank you. We want to thank everyone for coming to the meetings, participating in the process of the school board, whether you're an observer or you're here to testify. You do make, citizens of Anchorage make our work possible and we thank you for being here. You do have before you an agenda, would entertain a motion to adopt it as presented?
Who to approve the agenda as presented?
I think I heard a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. If there is no objection, we will adopt the agenda as presented to you. We move to section B under reports and first up is our student representative, Mr. Pack.
Thank you, Mr. President. So for my report, I'd like to talk about our December meeting, December SAB meeting. It was on 10th this month, so last week. This meeting was both festive and productive. Our student delegates were dressed in holiday wear and hot chocolate was present as promised and voted on. The most salient takeaway from this meeting is that we passed the first resolution of the school year and it was presented by Service High School. And this resolution was titled Resolution Twenty Four, Twenty Twenty Four dash zero three, Creation of a Buzzers System in Service High School. And it's much longer than what I'm going to say right now, but this resolution in essence is as follows. Request funding from the Anker School District to purchase and install the buzzers into the G side and D side doors of Service High School. So this is a request from students delegates from service and this is for their safety and also efficiency for students who can go in and get access during a, during and before the school day. And as a student rep, I have sent this past resolution to the school board and our administration for their consideration and I look forward to further updates. In our meeting, we asked our schools, how do your schools support students during the finals or what does our schools do to celebrate the holiday season? And most schools decided to answer the latter and some takeaways or some noticeable answers include one from Bartlett. They have their language classes sing to the veterans' houses during the holidays. Clark Middle School has their annual Falcon Games. Golden View has holiday candy cane sales to support Salvation Army. Highland Academy do, does lock-ins. Blair's does a giving tree in the library where teachers can request things for their classrooms. And West has their student governments go to the Pioneer Home to decorate the holidays. So some very nice things. After all our discussions of the resolution, we had our roundtable discussions. One of the roundtable discussions was on the topic of late start times. And the general consensus on this issue is that our buses are either always late or really early. A lot of students are getting home late. And since students come out during rush hour, many students are unsupervised during that time. And this is solely from the delegates, so I mean, take it as you will. And another discussion topic we had was on the transition from sixth graders to middle school. For some of our sixth and seventh graders there, or for our seventh graders there, some of them have answered that it has been a little bit stressful. And a bit challenging, but I think that is how it is when students go into middle school. And now on the topic of freshman academies, there was a bit of a balance on both sides. Students thought that it's beneficial to explore professional interests, but a lot of students requests that it be optional. Some students have reported that their classes are repetitive and although the concept is great, there's not enough resources. And that there are additional stress on teachers because they have to give lessons on things that they aren't fully knowledgeable about. And then finally, we had a discussion topic on the greatest challenges that the students perceive are in their school. Number one, that I've seen repeated from different students is vandalism, especially in the restrooms, a lot of schools are having to close their bathrooms because students are putting inappropriate signs in them and also doing the devious lick trend, if you know what that is. A lot of students have also mentioned that social media has decreased our attention spans for our students. And students aren't prioritizing schools and that's what they're seeing between their peers. And so students are asking that there be more hands-on activities to help stimulate these students who may have decreased attention spans. And finally, students have also mentioned that school spirit is an issue. So that concludes my report. The last thing I could say is I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season and a restful break. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board, member Don?
Yeah, could you further explain the buzzer system at service?
So the resolution? Do you want me to read the resolution or is someone else?
What's the current status of those doors and how will it change with the buzzer system?
So I believe that they can only walk into the front door currently and if they're not adult, clearly they will just allow it be allowed to be walked in. So they are saying that possible threats can come in as long as they look like not adults. The buzzer system would basically mean that some schools are doing the buzzer system as in there's a video camera system, so you can see who's buzzing in, requesting to come in and that is what they're saying is going to increase safety and they're also asking to have it in the G side and D side doors of Service High School. So there are more points of entry with more security and that is their proposal.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move to the next item, which is the military report from Colonel Hanson.
Mr. President, just a point of personal privilege, I guess. Can I get some tech help? I can't remember. Well, I need some tech help with my login for voting.
I'm guessing a password reset on board box? Okay, and I see Mr. Brown is on that. Military report from Colonel Hanson, thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. School board members and Anchorage community. My name is Colonel Dustin Hanson. I am the Jay Bears Mission Support Group Commander. And I would just like to take about three and a half minutes to convey remarks regarding our support for the academies of Anchorage. Readiness. As one of the commanders on Jay Bear, I spend a lot of time thinking about building a force that is ready. Therefore, it's no surprise that Team Jay Bear supports Anchorage School District's academies model. We support the academies of Anchorage because it fosters our students readiness for the workforce, for college and for life. Students who are equipped for the rigor of advanced degrees and the demands of a professional workforce are valuable assets in helping communities thrive in adversity and grow in opportunity. As a partner, we want to help Anchorage grow as a vibrant, prosperous community, recognizing the Anchorage School District's goal for students to be college, career and life-ready graduates. Team Jay Bear is a loyal, dedicated partner in the academies of Anchorage. We also serve as a major employer for local graduates, attracting and retaining homegrown talent to accomplish the mission. Jay Bear's mission to protect the homeland and project combat power aligns with the academies model because our students are learning the skills needed to power the base and defend the homeland, especially within Jay Bear's civilian corps. Our civilian corps is filled with jobs such as law and public service, education, culinary and hospitality management, business and administration, engineering, construction technology, project management, logistics, carpentry, early childhood, nurse aides, automotive maintenance, aviation maintenance, transportation, marketing and design, environmental management, computer science and IT, behavioral health, just to name a few. Again, Team Jay Bear supports the academies as it grows and develops our talented students, shaping fulfilling careers while reinvesting back into this epically grand state of Alaska, one of the most strategically important locations in the world. Alaska's proximity to anywhere in the northern hemisphere demonstrates Anchorage's inherent perpetual geostrategic importance and our adversaries are keenly aware of that. As the military readies for an era of great power competition, the academies prepare our students to compete for and thrive within Jay Bear's workforce. While the academies bolster readiness within our student population, Jay Bear expands that readiness by focusing on warfighter readiness, installation readiness and community readiness. So this begs the question, ready for what exactly? The answer is both simple and complicated. To win a fight against an equally powerful adversary in an environment that's violent, uncertain, complex and ambiguous by leveraging capabilities on the ground, sea, air, cyber and space. And to win that fight, we need to be ready. Our airmen and our soldiers need to be ready to fight and win. Our joint base needs to be ready to project combat power and our local community needs to be ready to provide holistic support. Finally, the academies of Anchorage plays a key role in this holistic community support because it readies our students for technical careers and advanced education, both integral to our national defense. Jay Bear remains a steadfast partner with the academies because we fight and win through technical expertise and academic rigor. Jay Bear offers a robust menu of civilian careers, as mentioned, that are mission-focused, protecting the homeland, projecting power. Many careers that a student may see elsewhere are uniquely available on Jay Bear because of this strategic mission. So we will continue to support the academies model through partnership opportunities at the individual schools, district-wide events and across the Anchorage community. Team Jay Bear knows that ready students make for a robust workforce that leads to a prosperous community resulting in a secure nation. Thank you for being a community that is passionate about our students' education, committed to their readiness for careers, college and life. We are in this together. Thank you for your time. Stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Member Wilson.
Thank you very much, sir. This past spring, three out of fifty-three students leaving fifth grade at one of our high schools were considered proficient in reading. I think that everybody here in the boardroom supports the notion that all of our students need to be mission-ready, no matter what they do in life. But I don't see us having the funds to do so right now. I don't see us having the funds to get the other fifty now sixth graders who are in middle school, ready given the class sizes they're facing and given the accelerated learning they need to make. So I would respectfully ask if you have any solutions to helping the district not just implement academies and pathways, but supporting students' core competencies so that they can succeed in high school. Kind of a rhetorical question, but it's one of our realities.
Well noted, ma'am. Yes, and beyond just words that support the academies model, we are all moms and dads, brothers, sisters, aunts and uncles that are absolutely interested in what's best for the community, for our kids, for our students. We want to get to fifty-three out of fifty-three reading at that proficiency level and and we will also invest our time and our talent of which there is much within our community to, to get our kids, our kids being the community's kids to that level of proficiency. Everybody wins when that happens and we're interested in that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from board? Seeing none, thank you very much. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I didn't see down there. Member Bellamy.
Thank you. Thank you, Colonel. I appreciate your comments and I think while we struggle to do, while we are struggling financially, I do know that the superintendent and his team is looking for a cost-neutral way to make some part of the academy work, work. Because I think in, in the long term, I, I, I agree and I applaud your willingness to support the district in these efforts. And so while we don't know what that's going to look like, for me, that is a very real and, and, and I think valuable experience for our students to have. Everybody's not going to college. But everybody has to make a living and everybody has to they have, they deserve to be the best that they can be. So somewhere in, in the middle of not having money and trying to figure it out, I think we'll, we'll do it. It, it might not look like we thought it was going to look like, but thank you for your support. And I look forward to talking to you more about it. Thank you.
Absolutely, ma'am. Thank you.
Member Wilson?
I, I would like to acknowledge and share my appreciation for the continued partnership with Jay Bear. There I mean, it's huge resources that our kids are having access to and with that partnership, it, it, it's an amazing opportunity for our students to learn about all of the the, the opportunities available close to them. And, and when we talk about the academies and we talk about school business partnership and we talk about those partnerships, Jay Bear is, is a shining star in that. And, and I really absolutely appreciate that because those opportunities for our kids, for our students are, are not just the students that aren't going to choose college as, as their option. These are opportunities for kids that are going to choose to either go into the workforce directly or want a higher degree, a higher level of, of academic rigor. So, so it's the whole gamut and I know Jay Bear offers all of that and I know many of the Jay Bear folks come in and read to our students. They, they partner with our students. So I know that partnership is at K through twelve level. I've seen it and I absolutely appreciate all of that work because it's, it's a, an absolute continued effort to keep building that partnership. So thank you for that work.
Absolutely. Thank you. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the report tonight. Thank you for your service and the update. I, I guess I'll, I'll echo appreciation for the support of academies of Anchorage and that as many opportunities as we can provide our students to be life-ready is a critical focal point for this board that we've had that focus on now for a series of years. And as a therapeutic foster parent to youth who don't always test well. And so proficiency isn't the perfect, perfect measuring stick, but who have had numerous students participate. And joining the armed forces, I'll say that there's a, a, a just intersection there between how the district can focus on CTE education and the pathways that that can provide to our Jay Bear community. And so thank you for your service to our country again and being here tonight and expressing the sentiments. Thanks. It's a privilege. Thank you.
I will add, I do recall a time when we counted on the military to take the kids that we really couldn't do anything with. And somewhere along the line, that shifted to where it's competitive now and they, they've got to have skills to qualify. And that, that way, we think about that a lot. We will try to turn out students that are ready to be molded in the way that, that you folks do an incredible job of. I, I know the average age in the military surprises people because it's very low and yet does remarkable work. So thank you for everything you do and we will try to send you good candidates.
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Next on our list, we do have a report from the Lions Club about our remote area medical clinic at Begich Middle School. Mr. Campaign, I think, has a video for us and is going to talk about what's happening there. Thank you.
First show on the video before. Let's go ahead and do that. Sure. So hello, my name is Dr. Patrick Campaign, a Mountain Dew Lions Club member and actually the lead coordinator for the free pop-up healthcare clinic that we held at Begich Middle School in April of this year. And this video is just a short summary, kind of showing you the overall aftermath. And then I'll follow up with a short blurb as well, offering my personal thanks for letting it happen. That's frightening.
The amount of supports, not only just within the state, but like nationally is insane. The amount of people that popped in just to support, like not only just this event, but ram in general, it's impressive. That's the greatest thing to see, just that level of support.
Ninety-nine percent of what we accomplish is done through volunteers. We do have a paid staff, but it's very small according to, I guess, in relation to what we provide, which is I guess healthcare for about close to twenty thousand people per year through about sixteen thousand volunteers.
Over ninety-five percent of the people here are locals. So it's honestly neighbors helping neighbors. You get a chance to meet a lot of new people. You get to understand what kind of demographics and what kind of people who need the help are. And you really get a great sense of camaraderie, being able to work hand in hand with sometimes people who you never expected would be able to, to help out with the community like this.
There's more people in the community that care than you realize because when you're out there working and you don't have medical insurance. I'm a long-haul trucker and driver trainer and this event made it where I could finish getting well. I have a chance to be able to go back to trucking.
And it's just a, a well-coordinated event. Everybody's so helpful and friendly to the people coming in. And such a diversity of people find out about it and come for help. And there's a whole lot of people that can't afford to get their vision care. And if I can help them, that's a blessing to me.
And a lot of people in the other clinics I've done have not had primary care. And I'll also give them a chance to get women's health done and I believe they'll have resources here to give them referrals if they need it. Plus we're fortunate, they're going to be able to get some immunizations and if they need blood draws. So there are a lot of services here, more so at this clinic than some of the other clinics I've done, which is really wonderful. And it really helps a lot of people and just seeing how happy and how appreciative the people are when they come here, the patients. It's just an absolute wonderful thing.
I would highly recommend this to anybody who's been in the same position that I am, where you just haven't been able to afford that care and there's things that you need to get checked up on or even if you're not sure if you have anything going on, you're going to be treated as a human being. No judgment for your situation or circumstances. You're going to get the healthcare that you need and it's going to be one of those things that benefits both future you and present you. So absolutely. People should come out and use this service, everyone who needs it.
I would just like to thank the community for having us, Dr. Campaign and his lovely wife, Anna, and everyone who has helped made this event a success. And the middle school, Begich Middle School, thank you so much for hosting us and letting us work here. We are super excited to be here and we hope that you'll have us again next year.
So for those who are here about the same time last year, I actually came up to this very same desk requesting permission to do an early rental for Begich Middle School for April of twenty twenty-four. And this is obviously partnered with Remote Area Medical. These large events usually require at least a minimum of a year of planning in advance. But I really felt that the symbolism there of holding it at one of our local schools to advocate for families, helping families and locals helping out locals. We offered, as you saw, free medical vision and dental care for anyone who came in on a first come, first served, regardless of ID, ability to pay or insurance needs. Many, many of our volunteer bases were local, but we also had doctors who flew in as far as from Michigan, Florida and even Malaysia, who came up to be able to offer this weekend first of free healthcare. This was all funded by private donors, including myself, as well as a grant through the Anchorage Health Department. All funding that was raised stayed one hundred percent in Alaska to help out with fellow Alaskans. Among the very long list of thanks to Anchorage School District, it does include Anchorage Health Department, the Alaska State Department of Health, the president of the National Dental Association, who actually flew up from Washington DC to be able to help out for this event here in Anchorage. International leadership of the Lions Club, who actually flew in from Europe, who wanted to come in to oversee and see what Alaska is also like. Regional Hospital, Tote Maritime, Beans Cafe, the Anchorage Coalition Head to Homelessness, as well as many others, which I do not have time to listen to. If there are handouts, we do have those also listed on the back of your guys' pamphlets there as well for further insight. Over the two days in Anchorage alone, we saw over four hundred and ten people and we had about three hundred and seventy volunteers to help out. Each person got an average of over five hundred dollars of healthcare given for free. Besides the basic vision, medical and dental, we also offered free glasses, free lab work, free STI and STD screenings, women's health vaccinations, cognitive health and Alzheimer's screenings and multiple other things as well. Every person who left also had a shelf-stable box of food for four courtesy of Beans Cafe. Out of all the people who came, we also saw not only asylum seekers, but also referrals from school nurses for families to come specifically to this event because either healthcare is hard for them to allocate or frankly are not able to sustain the livelihoods necessary for their kids. For those who came, over a quarter of people there mentioned that they'd never actually had a healthcare examination before. And that's, that's a much, much larger percentage than even I expected. I am saddened that we cannot be accommodated to rent the school again though this year. But I do hope for a continued partnership as I coordinate for the following year's event for April or September in twenty twenty-six. I again really appreciate ASD for letting us use Begich Middle School this year and I'm more welcome to stay here for questions and I'm going to stay for the duration of meeting for questions after as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions from board members? Member Wilson? Oh, I'm sorry. Member Pack?
I just want to say thank you so much for your humanitarian work here. My only question is, are you planning on doing this again in Alaska this year or this coming twenty twenty-five?
Unfortunately, not for twenty twenty-five. The new options unfortunately fell through this year. But ergo, that's why I'm hoping I can try to continue partnership for twenty twenty-six.
Member Wilson?
No, I just, I just wanted to say this is an amazing opportunity for our families and it sounds like there was a tremendous amount of work and a tremendous amount of commitment from many individuals to make this happen. So thank you for coming back to share and, and report how well this went and how many of our families got to receive medical care. I, I've been to many different events, backpack giveaways, things like that. And the Lions Club is, is always there. So doing their, their vision tests and things like that. So I, I just, I appreciate all of that work. I know it's a tremendous amount of time that your volunteers put into really trying to serve the families in Alaska. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Wilson. Member Jacobs?
Yep, I just wanted to echo appreciation, Dr. Campaign, and then please keep the board in the loop as we can support further events that benefit our community and ASD families. Thank you.
Thank you.
Member Bellamy?
Thank you, Ms. Chair, and thank you, your organization. You guys started planning this two years ago or a year ago?
Officially about, about eighteen months prior.
Yeah, it's been, it's been a long time in the planning, but it was, I, I knew it was a hit. My neighbors, several of them went, went and were able to get some care that they've been long overdue. And so we need to have programs like this. I thank you for the report. And I'm glad that we were able to partner to get this off the ground and I hope we do as our student representative hinted, that we were able to do it again.
Thank you.
Even if it's a different middle school or high school, whatever, whatever the location is, I think we can partner. We'll find a way to partner. Thank you.
Super grateful, Ms. Bellamy. Thank you. I did want to add, it, it is a tremendous I did want to add, it is a tremendous thing, and I think I saw a little bit of it when the school district was able to stand up a free vaccination clinic. There are a lot of people that really have trouble navigating the medical industry. And, and it can be difficult, even if you have insurance, even if you have money in the bank, it can be confusing. And for people that lack any of that, the ability to just show up and be seen and be treated emotionally is just a huge thing for people, as well as physically. I'll also say, any of us who have worked in schools know that at times, people need help. There's not always a resource to be able to say, hey, on this day, this place, you can just go. It is a terrific thing. Regret, we weren't able to do it this year. I didn't know that, but if we can help make it happen next year, by all means, let us know. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments, Tom.
Seeing no other questions from board, we'll move ahead. Thank you for the video and the presentation. Board conference and committee reports, anyone have anything they wish to bring to the attention of the board? Seeing no hands, we will move to section C, college career life-ready high school graduation rate to the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our team will go ahead and come to the front, and we'll go ahead and have our formal goal monitoring discussion on our CCL goal, which is to increase graduation rates. So the board had the opportunity to review the data over the past couple of weeks, and we look forward to answering whatever question board members have about this goal and our metrics to improve graduation rates moving forward. So we'll let the team get settled, and then we'll welcome any questions from board members.
Member Lessons?
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. So I use this as an excuse to look at the district's publicly available data dashboard, where you can get more granular detail by school, by year, to better understand change over time. I mean, there's a lot of information in their report, but there's more information beyond the report. And what I noticed is essentially that the gap between the highest performing, the highest, the comprehensive high school with the highest rate of graduation in 2023, and the lowest graduation rate in 2023, actually grew from about fifteen point seven percentage points in 2023 to almost twenty percentage points in 2024. And the schools are slightly different, but essentially the gap grew. And I wonder if the administration could speak to that in some way.
Wonderful question. Member Lessons, thank you. Right out of the gate, before we get started, I'm just going to invite each member of the panel here to introduce themselves, so you know who's here. Starting right far right.
I'm Ally Cecil. I'm the director in mental health and students for, for student support, and I'm here today because I oversee school counselors K through twelve and bringing that lens today.
I'm Robin Harris. I am the senior director for Choice Schools and oversee charter and some alternative schools.
I'm Deanne Carroll, director of assessment and evaluation, and I am here because I get the pleasure of putting together the report for you.
And she did a great job. And of course, I'm Eric Backman, senior director of high school. So thank you. Yeah, and board member Lessons, it's a great question, very astute question. I guess I would lead with a, with a general statement, and that is that graduation rates increased this last year from roughly eighty-one percent to over eighty-two percent. And that was done during a period of time with decreasing resources, everyone has pointed out, painfully so. And we're also doing at a time to, to address your specific question, when we're seeing diversification of the district trend, which I've looked at for the last five years, which shows an increased number of students who are learning English as a second language, and an increased number of students receiving special education support in our high schools. This at a time when enrollment in the high schools is also decreasing. So our high schools, in effect, and the programs that support the high schools are supporting more diverse students with more needed support. And to have an increased graduation rate while all that is occurring, I think is a, is a point of celebration. So shout out to our principals and all of their staff, and most importantly, our teachers. In terms of the schools, you specifically pointed out, the two schools, Bartlett and Betty Davis East, representing title schools, have very high percentages, over seventy percent of students who are economically disadvantaged. And these schools, more than others, are seeing increases in second language learners and also special education support. So I think that is a succinct answer to the question.
And if I may add, you know, in light of member Lessons' question, I did notice that there is a gap when it comes to four-year graduation rates, graduation rates, rather, between our highest graduation school and our lowest graduation school. But I also think it's notable that when you look at five-year graduation trends, actually, our lowest performing in high school in terms of graduation makes a five-point jump, and our second lowest graduation rate high school jumps by ten points between year four and year five graduation rates, according to the data dashboard. So my wondering is, what resources can the board and myself provide so that we can close that gap between a four-year graduation rate and a five-year graduation rate? Because clearly, a huge percentage of students are showing success, but they just needed a little extra time. So one of the things that we had spoken to the board about was potentially adjusting the schedule, which has been delayed. But one of the reasons why we put that proposal forward was because it offers more courses within a student's schedule. So if they're missing a credit or failed a course, they now have more attempts to make up that credit. So that was one potential solution that we did put before the board, but now is the time, given the pause. What are some other ways that we can really leverage the potential that our students are showing, but they just need clearly an extra semester or two semesters to get there? So I wanted to add that context to the four-year versus five-year graduation rate.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant.
Member Bellamy?
Did you guys get my questions? Oh, good, good. For some reason, I had this, I had this flash, because I had one that I wanted to talk about. Again, you know, we've identified the gaps, especially when it comes to special ed and ELL or language, English language learners. How are we, how are we addressing them, tho- that, those gaps? I mean, what, what kinds of things and, or are we doing? And then what are the resources that we need to be thinking about when we develop this budget? I think it would, that was number seven on my list. Just looking at the gaps and how we address them.
Yeah, I would imagine that other members will have input here, but yeah, the report shows notable disparities in different student groups. So it's, it's really important to acknowledge that ASD serves certain student groups very well, and we're struggling with others. And the struggle was significant. You know, there's a thirty percent or so gap between our highest achieving subgroups of students and lowest achieving subgroups. One common denominator, as we've mentioned earlier, is socioeconomic status. There's almost a twenty percent gap, graduation rate gap, for students who are disadvantaged versus those who are not. So first and foremost, in terms of our strategy to address graduation rate generally, is earlier, early intervention with our ninth graders. And we've talked about that in various settings this year. But our theory of action is if we can identify ninth graders of any and all groups who are off track when they enter high school, that is, receiving one or more Fs, and we intervene quickly, involving the family and wraparound supports, get them back on track. In time, we're going to have a higher graduation rate. That's evidence-based. We've also put forward to the group, you know, the, the interest in expanding our CTE offerings. In ASD, students who are CTE completers, completing more than, or two or more years of a pathway coursework, their grad rate is ninety-six percent. That's very significant. And again, that's, that's an ASD metric. That's not from outside of our district. So those are the two general theories of action that we're moving with. Once students are identified, depending on what groups they're part of, we can individualize support. And at all of the high schools, of course, we have Indian Education coordinators. We have CIT support, migrant ed support. Ally's here representing mental health support and counseling, an area that's incredibly important for students who struggle or are off track. So perhaps with that, I'll turn things over to Ally, and she can talk a bit more about added support.
I'd be happy to. I think that's where the strategies really come in, and some of our specialty roles, like a school counselor, come in, especially in a teaming model with freshman academy or other teaming. It's creating that smaller learning environment where those interventions really can be targeted to groups of students, whether it's credit recovery or social emotional learning. I think some creative ideas that high schools are currently implementing, curriculum principles recently shared out, and they are really targeted at special population groups to close that gap. To Dr. Bryant's point, a really targeted summer school program that a few of our high schools have offered, really have increased the credits that students are earning prior to their senior year, and getting them on track for their four-year graduation rate. So those specialty roles and utilizing them in targeted services really can increase the graduation rates. And while some of the moves that we're making right now won't always show until that group of students reach that graduation cohort, the environment is really changing for all of our students, and that's where we can also layer in the implementation of PBIS, our Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, in all of our ASD schools, speak to creating that environment of consistency and rigor that all of our students are accessing. So those tiered approaches are really proving to be successful.
All right, thank you.
Or member Bellamy? One other, one other addition to that, I would just point out that the whole group here and others are working on bolstering support for our credit recovery programs. And you'll see in the report, and we're, we're quite proud of this, but Benny Benson and SAVE, most notably, show really significant increases in their grad rate. One of the reasons why the overall rate went up, and we're doing a lot to support those schools. We've added some staff to those schools, trying to extend the school day to longer periods of time, trying to be more organized and intentional, in keeping track of student progress toward graduation. And so that seems to be paying off as well.
Great. So going back to the identifying students early, ninth grade, what does that look like? I mean, who, is it the counselor that's going to follow up with, with the student? And, and is the parent, are the parents involved at that point, or at another point later?
Yeah, great question. So in this last year, the, the school district adopted and has done a lot to develop a data platform, early intervention data platform called Unified Insights, which allows any educator in the building, administrators, teachers, certain staff members, to identify students who have fallen off track in terms of attendance, in terms of GPA, in terms of course marks. And there are a lot of different ways to do that. We've, we've spent a lot of time and invested a lot of, of resources in, in building the capacity of our educators to use the system. In the high schools, certainly, our counselors are using it. We can filter for different student groups by ethnicity, by special programs, by grade level. Those lists of students who are struggling can be handed off to teacher teams. We've organized our ninth grade teams into academies, so cohorts of teachers are working together, meeting in PLCs. They're reviewing that data. I've seen the meetings take place where an educator will commit to following up with a family of a student who's struggling with attendance or with grades. Those lists are created, and then the team will meet the following week to discuss what steps have been taken. It's systematic, but also highly individualized in terms of outreach to individual students. And this is where the rubber meets the road with on-track work, early identification, and then action.
Right. Yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Member Pat?
Thank you. This is a question submitted by Aggie Martinez from Polaris K-12. He asked, might there be a correlation with the number of students decreasing in ASD and the graduation rate increasing?
Yeah, just a note, we, Chris Hopeitz and I, who's the leader of evaluation and assessment, and I had the opportunity to meet with Josh Pack and his team from SAB to look over this data the other day. It was a great privilege, and shout out to our SAB leaders and Josh Pack. They asked tremendous questions. This is one of many examples. Some of them were so difficult and challenging, we had to punt and say we needed more time. So shout out to our students. So yeah, Josh, we do see a decreasing enrollment district-wide and also in the high schools. As was pointed out, we're seeing less of a decrease in high schools and more of the decrease in elementary schools, for whatever reason. Over the last five years, we've seen a decrease in the comprehensive high schools of about five hundred students. It's about a hundred students a year. Interestingly, the, the majority of students who are leaving the high school division tend to be among our highest achieving groups. And you can actually see that in this study, when you look at the students and the difference in the cohort numbers, the students who are leaving are English learners, are non-special ed, and are not socioeconomic disadvantaged. And you, you might draw the conclusion that because those high achieving students are leaving, our graduation rate would drop, but it hasn't. It's actually gone up. Which is where I began my comments tonight, just as a shout out to the incredible work that our high schools are doing, teaching more diverse students, many of whom have higher needs, and we're seeing an increase in grad rate. It's a modest increase. I don't mean to overstate, but it is an increase. And there's a lot more to that question, Josh, so thank you.
Member Lessons?
Thank you. First of all, it's great to hear that there's additional staffing and resources being directed at areas of, I think, our most acute need, which is the credit recovery schools, because the delta between those schools and the Big Eight schools broadly is tremendous. It's like forty percent, something like that. It seems to beg the question of, again, looking at a more granular level, and, and this is a tough question, but we're going to be talking about the budget. When you look at the combined enrollment of our two smallest comprehensive high schools, they are on par with one of our larger high schools. But the combined FTE for those two high schools exceeds that of the comprehensive school by about fourteen. Those two small schools are getting some disproportionate to their size resources, which seem to be helping. And I just wonder if we were to disproportionately allocate resources to all of our schools to, to dose them additionally, if we would see similar growth.
It's a great.
I'm looking for a yes.
An exploration. What I don't want to do is engage in a conversation about rightsizing at high school.
This is, this is a yes and.
Yeah, yes and. I think, yeah, and your question we received in advance, I spent some time with it. And important to note that the, the comparison that you provided, I think, presents some really important questions about staffing and resources, indeed. And when we look at the comprehensive schools grad rate, when we look at our credit recovery program grad rate, we have to ask the question, are more resources needed? And if so, what kind of resources? It's important to note that the comparison you offered, the, the FTE comparison is true, but comparing FTE related to teachers, certificated teachers, they're the same. It's the same metric. Where we see differences are certificated teachers, they're the same. It's the same metric. Where we see differences are in counselors and administrators and librarians and nurses and office staffing. That's where you see the difference in, in FTE. So I think that's an important clarification. For me, when I think about our district's work to support grad rate and our theories of action, uh, the most important thing I think we need to focus on, particularly for our lower performing schools, is making sure that they have highly qualified teachers in the classroom. And I know our human resources department is working hard on recruitment and retention. Uh, all those support positions, most importantly, paraprofessionals, that those positions are filled and those folks are in classrooms supporting students where needed. Um, and I also think counselors and mental health support, that those staff positions are filled. And right now, for example, at, at a couple of our high schools, we have unfilled counseling positions. Right? So I, I would begin there. Um, beyond that, um, I think I, I would, um, I would think we would need to bring in a large number of people to, to look at the specific scenario you painted. Um, we're talking about two thriving schools with incredibly high graduation rates.
And I, I wouldn't wanna take that away from them. I want to emulate elsewhere. Um, yeah.
Was the scenario that thriving schools had more FTE than struggling schools? Was that your scenario?
Yes. Okay. We have schools with better graduation rates for lots of reasons.
Right.
But also because they still need their assistant principal and librarian and fractionally available specialists on site to serve those students' needs. Uh, but they may, there's just, the ratios are not perfectly aligned.
Yeah. All the schools follow the same metric. That's very important. But if you were to combine two, you might see a difference.
Yeah, you would see a different, that would be a different.
In areas like nursing, office, uh, counselors, that sort of thing.
Worthy of thought, but yeah, you would, if you combined, randomly combined two schools and compared it to a diverse school as diverse as Bartlett and uh, and I'm not trying to answer your question. I'm just thinking, I'm just saying, uh, to me, what it, what it seems like to me is that um, just given the, the the diversity in, in Bartlett and in a school like East, you would have more challenges. You would have, those kids would have more headwinds. And all of that has to be taken into consideration. So, and I agree with you. I don't care where our kids are. I want them to graduate from, I want them to graduate and I want them to have the support that they need in order to do so. And uh, so for, for me, as a board member, you know, I, I just wanna know, I just wanna know what is it? What's working? And I have a good idea from some, I mean, you guys answered several of my questions already. Um, but do we have a way, I, I, once they, do we have, at one point, we talked about having a way to track our, not track, but follow our kids when they graduate? Um, were we able to do anything with that? Or can anybody talk about what that looks like, given our, given the eighty-one percent that we did graduate last year? Uh, that would have been eight on.
Yeah, so just a cursory response. Uh, Alaska DED provides us with post-secondary enrollment numbers.
Okay.
We looked at those a little earlier in the year, and just to remind the board, roughly forty-two percent of ASD graduates enroll in post-secondary schools, four-year, two-year, and military enlistment.
Forty-two percent?
Yeah, forty-two percent, which leaves fifty-eight percent
I do, yeah.
of our, of our kids who presumably are looking for employment.
Mm-hmm.
That's really significant.
And see, for me, that is a reality. Every, I'm not, go on, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and so beyond that, the district has subscribed to a platform called National Clearinghouse. And I'll hand off to Gia, who can explain a little bit more about that and what it, what it can do for us.
We do partner with the National Student Clearhouse to gather data on our students who are going um, to post-secondary education programs, accredited programs across the country and um, so we, we do gather that information. Part of that information al- also is partnered with DED um, to come up with that forty-two percent. We're also looking at um, through the Academies of Anchorage work and our special ed department partnering with um the state to explore a statewide data dashboard, similar to um, what other states like Wisconsin um, and Minnesota are working on. And um, so with the Department of Education, the Department of Labor, um, the Governor's Council on Disabilities, and then organization called Data Quality Campaign, we're sort in the process of exploring what that would look like and what, what would need to happen to make a statewide dashboard, not just for Anchorage School District, but for the state on how well our students are doing after
After they leave us. Okay. So that fifty-eight percent, they're not in college, they're in the community, somebody's community somewhere, and they're either looking for work or had, or have jobs. I mean, I'd like to think they have jobs, but uh, my guess is, is that they're probably um, they're probably struggling, but they could be an apprentice. Did you, did, did that forty-two percent go into some kind of apprenticeship? Or do we not know?
Unless the apprenticeship involves enrollment.
In a two-year, two or four-year. Okay, okay.
And uh, if I may add, uh, this is really important data for the administration and the board to look at because one, forty-two percent of graduates enroll in college, and I'm not going to put um, our team on the spot, but if you look at the six-year post-secondary outcomes, only a fraction of those students actually get a degree either. So it's actually a much greater number than fifty-eight percent that need additional support to be successful in life. And having done this work in different shapes and forms over my career, uh, one of the things that we need to look at are ways to equip students with more vocational credentials earlier on in their uh, high school careers. Dual credit opportunities as well, because the more students are essentially building equity in their post-secondary future, uh, the more invested they are to stay on track for that. So um, it's certainly a wonderful thing that forty-two percent of students enroll in college, but we have to keep our eye on what is the outcome of that. And when I looked at the outcome of six-year secondary outcomes for, I think, maybe two or three classes ago, it was actually only twenty-five percent of ASD graduates that received any sort of uh, post-secondary credential. So it's really more like seventy-five percent of our students, we need to intervene, whether it's doing something like the Academies of Anchorage, whether it's more CTE pathways, whether it's more dual credit, or even thinking about innovative ways to shrink that gap between high school graduation and college. Summer melt is a real thing. Of those forty-two percent that enrolled directly in college, I guarantee you that there are more that actually applied to college that year, but they didn't make it to the first day of school in college. So this is of the utmost urgency, and I feel that this issue gets a little lost in the sauce because we think about enrollment in college and that's it. But I actually think of the hundreds of students that had chosen their post-secondary path, didn't have the, perhaps the skills out of the box to be successful in their first and second year, and when they stop out of college, uh, one of my mentors once told me the most expensive degree that you can have is the one that you don't finish. So when these students leave um, with before four years, not only do they not have a degree, but they potentially have debt. And the point of the Academies of Anchorage and the work that we're doing is to really provide our community a chance at financial freedom and prosperity, and to really invest in the future of our economy. And all of that comes down to how do we prepare students to, one, apply to college and get through college? And two, um, if they're interested in the workforce, how do we get them these credentials as quickly as possible and for as cheap as possible, because many of our students are in poverty, so they can be successful. That's my soapbox. I did this for almost ten years, but this is really important work.
Member Bellamy?
Just to follow up uh, on the superintendent's comments, but also something I think um, Mr. Pack mentioned in his report about uh, teacher, teach, um, the academies adding more work to teachers. So I, I guess my question is, how are educators being supported to contribute to improving graduation rates and, and our uh, college career and life readiness?
Yeah, so I organized a response to this, this question. It's a good one. Thank you, Board Member Bellamy. Um, I organize it in terms of, of structures and tools and programs, sort of in those three areas. So with structures, of course, we have the district-wide uh, adoption of PLCs, which is incredibly fruitful structure um, that allows our teachers to meet every Monday morning and work together on a variety of different topics. Um, in terms of graduation rate, perhaps the most important topic is intervention and support. Um, I was just in PLCs on Monday at King Tech High School and saw one on, on literacy. I saw one on engagement. I saw one on intervention and one on growth mindset. Incredible.
Hmm.
Very well led. Um, the other structure I would mention is freshman academy, which I talked about a little bit earlier, about organizing our freshman teachers into cohorts. They work together as a network of caring educators to support cohorts of about a hundred to a hundred and twenty students. If you organize large comprehensive schools in that way, teachers get to know students better and more quickly and can intervene on their behalf uh, more readily. In terms of tools, we've already talked about Unified Insights, which allows our educators to identify students early who are falling off track in terms of attendance, GPA, or grades. And then programs, we spent a lot of time today already talking about the Academies of Anchorage. Um, it's, it's an uncertain time for the academies, but, but the, the vision is incredibly important. Uh, because it centralizes CTE classes and coursework. And as I mentioned earlier, graduation rates are incredibly high when students are enrolled and invested in CTE programs. And that's a cross-section of students representing all the demographic groups, uh, including those from low-income backgrounds.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then PBIS, which Ally mentioned earlier. Um, and I would just mention to the, the, the board that we're seeing very significant reductions in exclusionary discipline
Hmm.
since the adoption of PBIS at high schools. Uh, it's two years in a row. We're keeping more kids in school. We're missing less school as a result of disciplinary action. Um, and we're seeing more predictable and, and caring and restorative responses to behavior, um, which is a good thing.
That is a good thing. Yeah, I think uh, from our vision to our, to the outcome, we just, we miss so many, we miss a lot in between. Because it is, there are lots of challenges that kids have. It's not that they can't do, but they come to us with different skill sets. They come from different backgrounds. They have, uh, they may have some discipline problems, and so we expect educators to take them where they are and move them right through. But that is just not going to be easy for some of our kids without some intervention. So I'm glad to um, or something that excites them so much about school that they are going to, they're gonna hang in there regardless. Anyway, um, I, I appreciate it. I have more questions, but I will yield.
Any other questions or comments? Member Wilson?
I, I know we're tracking four-year graduation rates, but it, it really is important for me to see some data on the five-year graduation rates. And, and the importance of that for me is to see of our students, who is taking a little bit longer to graduate? Who, who's needing that additional support? Um, so a, and actually using this, these metrics, um, I think would, would clarify that for me, not for today, but for future. Um, so that we can see is it, I, I, I mean, I can make my assumptions, but it would be nice to see that, that data.
Yeah.
For, for everyone to see. It would, it would be nice, um, I think, to be, to be part of this, this presentation. So um, we, we, because it's important that our students are graduating, and it is a higher graduation rate at five-year versus four-year. And, and for me, that is significant, that our graduation rate is higher. And to find out maybe how we can support those students, even if it is within that five-year graduation rate, to continue to, um, and, and which of our students are needing more time and trying to figure out why?
Uh, Member Wilson, I'd love to address that. I've actually been spending this week looking very deeply at the four-year versus five-year graduation rates. And to be transparent, one of the reasons why is because we're putting a lot of thought into how we can move forward with the work of the Academies of Anchorage in a cost-neutral way to the general fund, but in a way that actually moves our goal forward when it comes to four-year graduation rates. So you'd be interested to know that um, our five-year graduation rate is eighty-six point five percent, and um, four-year is eighty-two point two percent. So you do see that modest jump on the aggregate. But what's more fascinating is if you go a high school by high school, so for example, I noticed that Bartlett High School four-year graduation rate is seventy-seven point four percent, but you see a ten percentage point jump with the five-year graduation rates. So those are dozens of students that were capturing who just needed, let's say, a summer or an additional semester to get across the finish line. For Betty Davis, I think it was a, a five-point jump when you look at the five-year graduation rates and uh, some, also South High School even uh, grows five points between four-year and five-year graduation uh, between a four-year and five-year graduation rate. So all of that to say, when we think about all the levers that we can push to advance this goal forward, one of the things that comes to mind for me, in addition to incredible CT programs, is the role of credit recovery and intervention when it comes to our students' uh, high school careers. And I say this as a high school, a former high school math teacher as well. Um, another thing that we need to realize is that when we increase PTR at high school, which happens, but one of the trade-offs is, one, you lose electives, but two, you also risk uh, losing support courses that could really help students get on track. I guarantee you that one of the reasons why some of these students don't make it to the finish line is probably because of math. And it's one of those types of courses where if you don't intervene right away by adding an additional course into that student's schedule to learn the fundamentals that they missed maybe in middle school or elsewhere, they may not get caught up. And again, I don't wanna beat a dead horse, but that was one of the rationales behind contemplating expanding our core schedule from six to seven or eight periods. And I understand that one of the reasons why that's not going to work in the short term is because of the loss of instructional time. But my rhetorical question to the team and to the community and to the school board is, well, what do we need to do in order to advance that goal forward? Because my theory is, is that students need access to more time to recover and relearn foundational skills that they didn't learn um, perhaps in middle school or perhaps even elementary school. So as we think about ways to resource our schools, one of the way, one of the things that I have my eye on like a hawk is the degree to which students can receive those extra support services, whether they're academic or whether they're social emotional, so that they can make it to the finish line. Because a ten-point jump between a four-year and a five-year graduation rate between one high school tells me that those students had the skills um, the entire time. They just needed additional time. My initial theory was perhaps they needed an extra class in their schedule. That's not an option going into next year. So let's think about ways to recover those credits during the summer or during the day or during creative ways that happened um, before, after the formal instructional day. I mean, it is a matter of urgency. When we look at our board goal to get to ninety percent in a few years, we're talking about two hundred students. So where are we gonna find these two hundred students and give them the resources they need to make it to the finish line? Cause they're there, because we see them pop up in the five-year graduation rate, and that's with no additional intervention conceivably. So what can we do before they complete their uh, senior year so that they don't need that extra summer semester? That's just an open question, and that's kind of the heart of the work when it comes to doing something like moving our graduation rates forward.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll comment. I appreciate the superintendent's uh, issues and goes to seven and eight, and I, I, I don't fault that. But if we go to an eight schedule, we're gonna change gradu- graduation requirements, my assumption. We're not gonna have people graduating after two and a half or three years. And uh, so that's gonna be a factor that works both ways. I support the concept completely. But my concern is that we gotta get the, the, the staff behind it. Um, we gotta make sure that we have the, the, the teachers and the staffing to pull it off. We need to do this. I am not disagreeing with that at all. We've gotta get it done. But if we don't get the resources from the state, if we can't work it through that, we can't have, can't start losing teachers because of caseload, how many uh, uh, students each teacher is going to have is gonna go up. I mean, if you, you, you have to do it that way. But I, I'm totally in agreement with the, with the issue. The academies is critical. I, we heard that from the uh, military today as well, the base. I appreciate that. I just, I just wanna make sure that um, we're listening to the concerns of teachers and we're on the, all the factors that need to be laid out to make it work. It's just overwhelming, and I appreciate your decision to hold back on that a year and see. It's just overwhelming. And I appreciate your decision to hold back on that a year and see what we can do. Because I hope we do move forward in some direction.
Member Wessons?
Great conversation, everyone. Thank you all for the questions and answers and and comments. This falls into the comment line. You know, it has struck me before that that truly we're talking about fifteen to thirty kids at some schools in any given year and maybe thirty to sixty kids at, you know, larger schools that need that targeted assistance. And I think that that's one of the fundamental problems that I've wrestled with with the academies. Because certainly how we've been allocating our FDS funds has been equal. And that's not the dosage that I believe we need. We need targeted dosage to meet targeted students. And I think that when we direct needed resources to where they will most acutely be received, that's when we'll see the greatest gains, because that's just gonna be more effective.
Member Wilson?
I've spent years partnering with King Tech. I use King Tech as as an example, because they their programs are amazing and and the the work they do with their students are amazing. I've talked to countless number of students and countless number of parents who so many of them have said, my my son or my daughter was not successful in a traditional academic setting, because they just they weren't interested. They weren't. And and it's not that they didn't have the capabilities. It's not that they weren't smart enough to be successful. They just they there was that missing element. And when they got to King Tech and they found something that interested them, that really excited them, whatever that was, whether it be automotive or childcare or whatever healthcare, then their grades soared. And not only did they graduate, but they graduated with an intention to move into, whether it be post-secondary education or a job. Many of them signed on to a job. I've had so many of those conversations. So I I completely agree that we need to make sure our kids are reading. Absolutely. We need to make sure that they have that solid foundation in math. But if we don't keep our kids interested, if we don't allow them to be exposed to enough career opportunities, something that that really grabs at them to make them want to be successful academically, many of them we will continue to lose. I've had over fifty-five kids in my home in the past twenty years. I can attest to many of those teenagers having the capability to be successful and choosing not to be because they didn't find that spark that really drew them into choosing to be successful. So when I talk about our academies, when I talk about King Tech, when I talk about our school business partners, I talk about them with such great appreciation because I really truly believe that it will make a difference for so many of our kids. And not just our kids that need to find that that job when they're when they graduate, that career when they graduate, that post-secondary education. I mean, it covers all of them. They all need that spark, regardless of how well they do academically or how poorly they test. Because I've had those kids also that test poorly, but soar academically when they get out of high school. So when I think of all of our kids, when you when you're targeting to just a few students, you're you're still missing so many of them. So I I need to be very careful that we are not choosing to target a few and let so many of them fall through the cracks.
Member Bowman?
This is my last question, comment, and other. I love your theory of action. Can you, because I think I I don't know why, but first time I heard it tonight, I mean, really heard it. So if you if you would restate, I think there were two. Could you restate those, please? That you you said it was, I know, we believe if we do early intervention in something else, what was that other something?
Yeah, I
And off CTE. Yeah.
Early intervention to support on track to graduation status. Beginning with our ninth graders. And also, to the degree possible, the expansion of CTE offerings. And again, both of those are research-based. We've got a lot of evidence and metrics to support those right here in A S D with former graduating classes. So the use of action that we believe in, based on the evidence.
Yeah. All right. Thank you. Done.
Any other questions?
So I would like to kind of flip what the questions have been like today and to more of the student side. By tying in this data set into our climate and connectedness survey that most of our students across the district took last year. In that survey, students are asked about their perceptions of school safety, peer climate, student involvement, community support, cultural connectedness, for example. For schools who do have students who are graduating at, you know, favorable levels, do you think that there are certain attributes from this survey that can be indicators of successful graduation rates? And if so, have there been plans to prioritize those areas across district?
Sure. I really think that's important because we know that when students feel safe, they have trusted adults and they're motivated to come to school. We do see the correlation then that they can really reach every dream that they have. So I'd love to see the Climate and Connectedness Survey overlaid with those graduation rates. I think it's important for our systems to recognize that our staff want to encourage students in their goals. It's not our goals, it's their goals. And one tool that we haven't talked about tonight that is important in thinking about aligning students and staff is like a college and career exploration platform, which School Links is is one that we've been starting to utilize, where staff can see what students' goals are for their post-secondary and help them course plan their high schools. And and that aligns to the idea of having trusted adults in the classroom as well as support staff, so that we can then follow up with alumni and other to see what success they are showing and having. But it really starts with that safe environment that students want to and are motivated to come to and that parents want to send their students and recommend coming, so that we're partnering with parents on that. And so that overlay of climate and connectedness and perception being reality is really important for us to look at. And that is one of the keys in implementing our high-leverage practices. So I really appreciate that.
More questions or comments? Seeing that, I would like to add that as a board member, when we're talking graduation rates, I always do want to see fifth or six-year graduates as well. I'm hoping one day we just call them graduates. I think there will always be kids that need more time. We'll always have students that have something happen in the midst of their high school career that that disrupts for some period of time. And I I hope we can get away from, I mean, four years is a good target. But when it doesn't happen, it doesn't happen. And five years is fine for for students that need it. So I'm I'm hoping in our statistics and everything, we do look at that. I'll say also that, yes, if you ever feel bad about high school graduation rates, look at college dropout rates and you'll feel like you are really in a marvelous spot if you're back in high school. Twenty-year college student. So what can I say? But yeah, other other than that, I really do appreciate the the analysis and the data. No question. If we can offer kids something they want, we will improve. And I hope that we can move to do that. Yes?
Sorry, Mr. President. We will be providing some supplemental data for you regarding the five-year graduation rates in the Board Connect this weekend.
Any other questions? Seeing that, thank you very much for your work and we'll move ahead. That brings us to our first opportunity in the evening for public comment. We normally reserve an hour for public comment at the beginning and then do later comment at the end of the meeting. Due to the turnout that we've seen so far, what we're trying to do is take all public comment at the beginning so that members of the public don't have to stay with the board through the bitter end of the meeting in order to be able to speak. So we, I think we will be able to do that again tonight. During public comment, board members will not answer questions or engage in discussion with members of the public. This is the time for the public to come speak and for the board to listen. The school board welcomes the public to observe and contribute to our meetings through our comments. But to be productive, our meetings must be structured and civil. We do follow Robert's rules of order. We ask that people not attack a member or speaker's motives, no profanity or foul language. And we ask you, please refrain from disturbing the meeting, no cheering, applause, outbursts, waving of signs. I think we've got a well-mannered crowd tonight, so I don't think that'll matter too much. But we do want to hear from everybody and we want everybody to feel comfortable coming up to speak, whether they're in agreement with most people in the room or not. With that, the other thing we do is we allow students to testify first, because we're hoping they will do that and they go home and get a good night's sleep after doing all of their homework. Secondly, we will take any parents that have students in the room with them to speak. And then we will complete with everybody else. So when I call names, so I ask for a pair of people to come up to the podium or to the dais in front. Each person has three minutes and there's a timer you can see right in front of me facing out. And we will begin. The first two people on the list are students. Students, Cadence Belguard and Lana Chico. And I apologize if I didn't say that correctly. But if you can come up and have a seat at the microphones. Yeah. One of you will state your name for the record and then you'll have three minutes to speak. The floor is yours.
Hello. I am Cadence Belguard, a fifth grader at
I'm sorry to interrupt. I'm gonna ask you to get that microphone closer to you. It has to be right in front of you. That way we can all hear you. Thank you.
Hello. I am Cadence Belguard, a fifth grader at Baxter Elementary. I have been at Baxter since third grade. Baxter is like a second home. The teachers are great. They they get to know us and help us learn in fun and exciting ways. Please think about how Baxter how much Baxter means to us. It is more than a school. It is a family.
Is that everything? Thank you very much for coming and speaking. And if you'll tell us your name, you have three minutes. It's on.
Hi, my name is Lana Chico and I'm in Baxter too. And I'm gonna read a something I wrote because if you close Baxter, I will be sad because I have been in Baxter for four years. I have loved all my teachers. They made learning fun. Baxter makes me feel like I belong. So if you close Baxter down, I will feel sad because I will have lots of friends I love. So if you close that close Baxter, I will most likely never see them again.
Thank you very much for coming and speaking to us. Next on our list is Cassia Chico and Dwayne Davis. He'll come forward.
My name is Cassia Chico. And I'm gonna tell you why I don't wanna close Baxter. I was sad that Baxter's closing, because we because teachers make learning fun and the teachers are really nice and our friends are really friendly to us. And when we have friends, then you get to know them and you get to know your teachers and when you first come, you get to know them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And if you'll state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Doom Davis. I am currently a fourth grader grade student at Baxter Elementary School. I am opposed to the proposed rights signing plans, specifically the idea of closing neighborhood schools to address the budget shortfalls. I am in battle of the books on student council and was selected as an alternative for fourth grade class in the upcoming spelling bee. I will, I participate in after-school programs such as Running Club with Mr. Nor, which provided my friends and I the opportunity to race in Bartlett High School Jubilee event. I got, I helped set up and attend PTA events such as the Turkey Shoot, where we can partner with high school basketball players in a basketball shooting contest. I won the Turkey Shoot in shoot my second grade year. This year, it was fun, but I didn't take home the prize. I live on the other side of Baxter Bog and love walking home from the school or being pulled over the snow in an inflatable boat by my father. Our school feeds students and encourages them to take fresh fruit home for free. We provide a safe space to learn and participate. In short, I have created a community of friends and peers at Baxter. This community is supported by dedicated, talented, caring, and priceless staff. Some of these staff members are trust are the trusted adults I have in my life outside of my family. I really care about my school and want to stay and I want it to stay open. Please allow Baxter to keep growing and fostering a loving commu- community. Please keep Baxter open. Thank you very much for your time. Have a good day.
Thank you to all of our students that came and spoke tonight. We appreciate it. I'm gonna also, we have Vanessa Chico on the speakers list. If you'll come forward and speak. And then you'll be able to take these kids home so they can do homework.
Hello, my name is Michael Davis. Thank you all for your time and diligence through the your your presence and participation in gathering the information and perspective for the community. I've seen a lot of the individuals faces around, not just at these board meetings, so I appreciate that. My wife, daughter Doone, and I moved to Anchorage in 2022. Education is really important to us. My wife is an educator. She's an educator at service. So when we moved, she actually has family that is at the Waldorf School. So we toured the Waldorf School and we toured Baxter her second, Doone's second grade year, and we decided to go with Baxter. I was very strongly an advocate for Baxter, even though my wife's family had family at Waldorf. The second grade year was amazing. Our only like apprehension at the end was like, it seemed like the classes were really big, big classes. Ms. Gania did wonderful and Doone made a lot of bonds. Ms. Gania did wonderful and Doon made a lot of bonds, so I didn't have as much uh, pudding to stand on to push back against the Waldorf School, so we tried that out. Uh, Doon's third grade, she started at Waldorf. The class sizes were smaller. It definitely has a different structure of learning, uh, they didn't have a library there, which to me was, you know, not for me, um, but we tried it out nonetheless and uh, it wasn't the right fit, so we ended up moving back to Baxter in the middle of Doon's third grade year and it was like we had never left, the teachers were very welcoming. Uh, the friendship bonds were still strong in there, so uh, we've kind of had the experience with the big classrooms and still made the decision to go back. So, um, let's see, uh, uh, after losing the principal and replacing with like the interim, uh, Baxter really hasn't had the leadership support. Um, beyond the, the teachers and the staff and the retired teachers that come and invest there. Surely the most fundamental moral measure of any social system is the status of the children and the qualities of their childhood. I would like to assume that most of the individuals in this room and listening online would believe to have a strong quality childhood, individuals must have a strong foundation and access to educational opportunities and support. Unfortunately, the schools I see presented on the list for closure are the very same communities that most desperately need the access to the supports provided from the neighborhood schools. The population of families near or below the poverty line at Baxter is vast and English as a second language is also uh, very large, uh, also children need a behavior or support. Um, it seems like the right sizing proposal and ASD's response to the community feedback seems to have only yielded what appears to be a Trojan horse of further confiscation of the opportunity in service of the wealthy. The expense of those in greater need.
Thank you, your time has expired, thank you. And Ms. Chico, if you wish to speak.
Hi, um, my family and I moved here in 2020 due to my husband's work. Um, we were actually due to move again this year, um, but chose to stay. We chose to stay and a deciding factor was that we love our community and Baxter is a community school and it would be detrimental to the children. Um, if it were to close and you know, we have conversations about social and emotional wellbeing and I just don't see a situation where splitting up all of these kids is what's best for them. Um, I think the conversation should be, um, how we keep Baxter open and not, um, and what we could do to prevent that and not, um, a yes or no to closing it. And that's it.
Thank you both very much for coming and testifying. And I believe that's every, every parent that has students in the room tonight. I believe, um. So switching back to our normal schedule, we do have some people signed up to speak on non-action items and I'd like to call them forward right now. Uh, first on the list is Cameron Vincent Wang and then Brandon Stock, Strunk. If you're here and could come forward. You'll state a name for the record, you have three minutes.
All right, dear members of the ASD school board and district leadership, my name's Cameron Vincent Lang, I am the AP at Rilka Shula. Thank you for the ongoing engagement with the community during rightsizing discussions. And also I want to say thank you for our charter renewal a few weeks back. As we move forward with rightsizing, I urge you to make timely decisions, especially around facility locations. Extended timelines can impact charter schools, particularly around recruitment and budgeting. Facility costs represent about twenty percent of our budget and uncertainty around lease terms complicates our ability to plan effectively and provide stability to current and prospective families. Rilka Shula has grown rapidly, we're now serving four hundred and eighty-four students, making us Alaska's largest in-person charter program. Our success is due to our strong academic program, dedicated community and increasing community interest in ASD's choice programs. However, we signi- we face significant challenges in our current facility, including space constraints that can hinder our ability to provide high-quality education. We currently house four hundred and eighty-four students and forty-five staff members and a thirty-nine thousand square foot facility. This is crammed, yet we need those numbers in order to pay for the facility that houses us. I ask that Rilka Shula be considered for relocation to a repurposed ASD facility in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Move to a more suitable facility would ensure the long-term viability of our program. Hopefully align with ASD's goals of expanding access to choice programs and create opportunities to build new partnerships with local communities. Being housed in a neighborhood provides greater visibility and access to families who have expressed interest but currently lack nearby options. Our lease expires this August and we need clarity about our facility. This helps us prepare our families for potential moves and make necessary or uh, potential moves or make necessary reductions to our program. Over the past two years, this is what we've done. We increase our class sizes, we cut positions, we use savings to maintain our program. This is no longer sustainable in a facility that we can't afford. Staying in our building, Rilka will drastically look different moving forward. Many charter schools are operating over capacity, struggling to meet students' needs due to space and rental costs, especially for students with higher needs, like with IEPs and five oh four plans who require specific environments for instruction or small group testing. In some cases, these accommodations are being made in spaces like closets or hallways. Same time, some schools have underutilized space being used for non-academic purposes. Believe there's an opportunity to repurpose these spaces to better support students. Last, I'd like to note that as a charter school leader, I've seen the positive budgetary impact for ANCCS and Aquarian being housed in ASD buildings. Encourage you to review the data provided by ASD. Their plan is based on months of input and a data-driven process aimed at better supporting students. I look forward to further discussions on how we can ensure the success of all ASD students, including your ASD charters.
Thank you very much. You'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Yes, I'm Brandon Stroke, Principal of Rilka Shula. Hello, good evening, ASD board members and leadership. I want to begin by thanking you all for renewing the ten, uh, the ten-year charter for Rilka Shula. We are very excited to continue our academic success in partnership with ASD. Rilka Shula is an ASD program of four hundred and eighty-four students from all around Anchorage. Rilka students are ASD students, Rilka staff are ASD employees. The rightsizing initiative as currently proposed will benefit many ASD students, whether they attend neighborhood schools or charter schools. Students at neighboring schools will receive more academic services since those services will be consolidated and not spread across multiple buildings. Charter schools will have a stable facility and can redirect funding that is currently spent on rent for staff and student support. This is a win-win for everyone. Our current facility has served us well over the last ten years, however, as you know through previous communication, Rilka Shula is at the end of its ten-year lease and we are in need of a facility for the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The current lea- lease costs are no longer tenable and Rilka Shula has cut staff and used a sizable portion of its rollover savings to cover personnel costs. For this school year, we cut two point O FTE and the Evening Custodian. The approved twenty-five, twenty-six Rilka Shula budget cuts another one point four FTE and has no funding allocated for textbooks, student technology, office supplies or classroom supplies. While these expenses are, are being cut, Rilka Shula is using six hundred thousand dollars of rollover savings this year and next year is planning to spend seven hundred thousand dollars to avoid making further staffing cuts. In the end, we are un- if we are unable to reduce facility costs, the rollover savings will be used up and we'll have to make drastic cuts to personnel, which will impact our students. A different facility would reduce facility expenses, provide sta- stability to the program, provide more square footage. As Cameron previously noted, our building is thirty-nine thousand five hundred square feet. And provide more outdoor space. All of these factors are beneficial to ASD students who attend Rilka Shula. I want to thank you all for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I know you all will do your best to make the right choice for our school district, thank you all.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Rebecca Colvin and Erica Monahan. Come forward. You'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Have we closed enough? Excellent. My name is Rebecca Colvin and I serve as the APC Chair for the Rilka Shula German Immersion School. Let me start by thanking you and the administration for working with us to renew our ten-year charter recently. We are now on a path to educate another ten years' worth of ASD students in the German immersion program. Rilka Shula's APC has advocated on many issues that had the ability to impact our school and our students. When high school immersion programs were reviewed for possible elimination, APC expressed support for their importance in immersion education. We have contacted the legislature and the governor to request an increase in the BSA. Now we are advocating for an equally important issue, our school's facility. As we've stated in previous communications to the district, Rilka Shula is currently in the final year of our ten-year lease on a commercial building. While our time in the building has been fruitful, we are no longer able to afford to remain there in the current fiscal situation and terms. Just like ASD and all other public schools, the BSA is our primary fu- source of funds. Our operating expenses have steadily increased while suffering under flat funding from the state. Over the past two years, we have increased our class sizes, we have cut positions, we have spent significant portions of our savings. All of these have been done in an effort to continue to provide our four hundred and eighty students the high-quality dual immersion program they deserve. We come to you again to request consideration for an ASD facility, should one become available as part of the rightsizing mission. Our current facility's lease expires August twenty twenty-five. We need to know as quickly as possible if a facility may be available. We need to discuss with our families and students a possible move or to prepare for significant cuts to our program. Let me end by saying, we appreciate the work ASD has done to support your students in charter schools and other schools of choice. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, my name is Erica Monahan. I am a mother of two children in the Anchorage Public School System who are on the waitlist for Rilka Shula, by the way. I began my teaching career in a high school program dedicated to career readiness for at-risk students. I am now a history professor affiliated with a global and national security policy institute at the university. I thank the airmen who spoke earlier. I too am deeply concerned about readiness. Student readiness, life readiness, academic readiness, career readiness and geopolitical readiness. And I am here to voice my concern about the Academies of Anchorage model, even as currently revised. I offer the following analogy, the holidays are coming, many of us may have or be guests soon. If you had a house guest coming, you would not knock out a load-bearing wall to build a cardboard addition that you could not afford to heat nor furnish. Given where budgets and staffing are, that is kind of what the Academies model is asking of Anchorage. Importantly, no good guest would ask such a thing of a host or hostess. It is great for this foundation to visit Anchorage with this temporary monetary support. Yet the model needs to be reworked significantly to be one that works for Anchorage students in a sustainable manner. The revised proposal still intends to implement the Academies' plan in a way that implements the CTE curriculum across the entire district. I feel that it's fiscally irresponsible for the district to continue with this proposal for a variety of reasons. Not every student is college-bound. CTE should be a robust part of the high school curriculum. As member Wilson pointed out, exposure to career opportunities can help hone one direction. CTE must not come at the expense of teaching fundamentals. That undermines the chances for Anchorage High School students who aspire to go to college and to return to Alaska with advanced degrees. The current plan, as I understand it, handicaps students by providing less instruction time to master the same curriculum. I reject the suggestion made at the October meeting that to- student teacher direction, uh, time was not critical. Another problem, it's easier to grow government than to shrink it, um, but we'll leave that. Watering down the CTE program and all of our existing secondary fundamental programs is no way to prepare Anchorage, Alaska or the United States for a robust and ready future. I urge you to accept this grant funding only if it can be rolled out with a more modest scope. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Caroline Storm. You will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening, Caroline Storm, Education, uh, sorry, Coalition for Education Equity. School board members, thank you as always for taking public testimony. I would like to encourage you to pass a resolution similar to the Juno School Board that opposes the proposed deed regulation that will be rolling out in March. And secondly, I just wanted to say I don't envy you this evening. Um, you have a very difficult decision that you have been forced into because of the state's failure to adequately fund public education. For everybody in this room, the Coalition for Education Equity commissioned an evidence-based study similar to the Anchorage School District. Um, and it shows that the base student allocation should be higher than thirteen thousand dollars, which is more than double than where it is now. I'm encouraging everybody in this room, as I did last week or two weeks ago, the last meeting, to please call your legislators and ask them to significantly raise the base student allocation so that our schools can be adequately resourced. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. That is all of our speakers on non-action items. Turning now to speakers on action items. First on the list, uh, Carissa Silva and Shannon DeLongchamp. Um, and Shannon is uh, connecting by telephone.
Point, point of order, Mr. President. Um, doesn't action testimony come once the appropriate memorandum has been introduced?
We'll take a five-minute eddies. I apologize for the more than five minute recess. Um, I do want to explain for everybody, we are deviating from our normal process. Uh, in the usually, action items would be heard when the motion has been made and it's being considered. Uh, but for the past five or six weeks, because of the volume of testimony, we have wanted people to be able to testify and perhaps have another life. Board members don't get that, but members of the public do. So we are hearing all testimony at the beginning of the meeting uh, so that people don't have to sit through the the whole agenda in order to get there. So that's that's why there was some confusion on this side and I do want to clarify that. So, uh, we do have, I believe, sixteen more people that do wish to be heard tonight. Go ahead and start with Carissa Silva and Shannon DeLongchamp. And Shannon DeLongchamp was telephonic. Okay, and she's on, so. Silva, if you're here, if you would come forward. And not seeing, um, the next two people on the list are Megan Garnett and Olin Radmay. I apologize if I'm not saying that right. Uh, and we'll ask Ms. DeLongchamp to testify by phone. Ms. DeLongchamp, if you can hear me, star six, we'll unmute you and you have three minutes.
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Thank you.
Um, I speak to you not just as a six year Baxter employee, but also a Baxter parent. I brought my five year old daughter with me this year, not just for convenience, but because I wanted her to experience the Bobcat pride I have experienced these last six years. And I also wanted her with Ms. Fulkerson for kindergarten. Um, the first announcement on November first placed Baxter on a three year plan. On November eighth, we attended an optional meeting where we were reassured over and over to just wait until December seventeenth. Um, you'll never know what could happen. Well, they were right because on November twenty seventh, the day before Thanksgiving break, three schools received what they called a Christmas miracle and Baxter lost two and a half weeks to get people together. Baxter was left with only twenty days and one school board meeting before decision day to research and get folks together to show that we should also stay open. More research needs to go into schools that are proposed to receive Baxter and Unaca students. The move will put the three Baxter incoming schools at ninety two percent or higher capacity. This will be a problem if there is a bigger influx of students than estimated. Baxter has the largest SLC program in ASD. At the beginning of the school year, there was a big shift due to zones changing. These students thrive on consistency with their peers, their teachers, their routines, and their school. Shuffling them around again will cause unnecessary hardship on them and their families. Baxter is a walking school. We have one gen ed bus that picks up a handful of students that live across busy roads. Other than that, our students are transported or they walk. Closing Baxter will place a tremendous hardship on these families that will need to go to a school further away from their home. This will also require more bus routes and drivers that ASD does not have. Baxter is a Title One school. This allows us to have family nights that are free for our families and students, where staff can build relationships with families in a more relaxed environment. Also, just because Baxter and Unaca are Title One schools does not mean it will automatically go to the incoming schools when they receive our students. Our SLC program came to Baxter uh, third quarter of the twenty one and twenty two school year, and we were not Title One until twenty three, twenty four. ASD could lose two Title One schools in Anchorage and gain none next year. At Baxter, our breakfast and lunch are not reduced, they are free. This is something a lot of our families count on with the rising prices of groceries. Knowing their students will be fed at school is one less worry for our families. Baxter also has a food pantry that we use to help any of our families that might need a little extra help around around the long breaks. We have a lot of food drives and dedicated partners that donate food, winter gear and other items to Baxter. We also have a YMCA program that our family relies on after school because our parents work later than schools open. Um, there are other options that could be looked at instead of closing Baxter. We could take on a pre-K program. This has been an inquiry by multiple families over the years. Or Baxter and Unaca could combine at Baxter. This would keep both school populations intact. That would be very beneficial for the students and the staff of both schools. Baxter has the space to take on Unaca's entire population. It would still leave room for fluctuation. And if Baxter and Unaca are both closed, the probability of staff following students is a lot lower than is being estimated. Or Baxter could share space with three.
Thank you very much for your testimony. And either of you will state a name for the record. You have three minutes.
Um, my name is Megan Garnott and I am the secretary and registrar at Baxter Elementary. Um, I've worked there for three years, but before that, my son also attended Baxter for all of his elementary. Baxter is quite literally my home away from home. I know every single one of our students' names, um, as well as most of their family members. Um, and I work there not for a paycheck, but because I love our students and our community. Um, I'm writing because the school, because closing our school is not the right decision. Um, Baxter is a Title One school. We offer free breakfast and lunch to all of our students. Many of our families are low income and struggle to provide food for their homes. This means oftentimes the only meals they get are at school. Uh, many families never have had to pay for school lunch before and would not have the means to do so. Uh, Baxter also operates a food pantry and we provide food to many families throughout the year. Um, taking away these resources, I feel like would be detrimental to many. Um, as we know, not all of the receiving schools are Title One or provide free meals. Um, kind of echoing what Shannon said, Baxter is a walking school, meaning most of our students live so close that busing is not even available to them. We have one gen ed bus at Baxter that picks up just a small handful of students. Shuffling them around to different schools will require more buses, more bus drivers, families having to drive further and other unnecessary logistical challenges. Um, we also have the largest SLC program in all of ASD at Baxter. These kids need structure. They thrive on routine. Each time they're moved around, it takes months for them to get comfortable again, losing losing important academic time. Last year, many of these students from this program were moved around for the second time in three years, causing anxiety and uncertainty. Um, the district claims that our neighborhood is aging out and we don't do not have as many kids being enrolled as previous years. But when I look at the data they put out, it shows our enrollment is actually up from the last few years. Um, every year, families apply for the lottery to come to Baxter. Um, but we have not been able to take any kids off of the lottery, so that is just kind of confusing to us. Yeah, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. If you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Thank you, school board, and good luck tonight. My name is Olin Radmay. I have two kids, one in first grade and one in fourth grade, in the Russian immersion program. I know your decision has already been made, but I feel it is my duty as a father, parent, volunteer, taxpayer, and concerned citizen. Your timing of the announcement before Thanksgiving did not give parents or officials time to react. When I found out about this was Tuesday, December second. It was on a thread for parents. It was not well distributed to the public. The strongest asset you have is us, the parents. We have built our lives around the schools and community. I talked to you about Turnigan Elementary and the Russian immersion program. Turnigan is a vibrant Russian immersion program where kids are immersed in a second language by native speakers. The loss of just one of these teachers would be detrimental to the program and the kids enrolled in it. The why is yet to come. The concern I have is adding eight and up to thirty three kids from the SBBS program to Turnigan Elementary. First off is training for all the staff at Turnigan Elementary going from a no touch policy to a new physical hold slash touch policy. We've heard during testament that the intimate implementation of the SBBS program to Baxter Elementary had staff quit. That could be one to two immersion teachers due to the teachers not willing to or not physically being able to deal with possible outbursts that these students might bring. What will the So what would the parent volunteers have training? Or will we lose that special group of individuals also? We will need added security, i.e. security systems, equipment, updated rooms, glass. If we don't have all this in place, will we get sued by the Department of Justice? Once again, the effect of seeing these outbursts will have a detrimental effect on the kids and decrease the morale and the outlook of the school. The SBBS program is slated to take up three classrooms, taking away the potential growth of the immersion program. Since the conflict in Russia, I am sure the feelings for the program have decreased. The end is coming and so will the feelings, the program, the feelings and the program will grow. Russian speakers will be direly needed in the future. These speakers will help heal the negative connotations that the word Russia holds. I would suggest placing the SBBS program into Inlet View Elementary where the security measures could still be added and implemented into the construction, saving time and costs in the long run. Whereas most up to date features can be easily added instead of trying to retrofit an old existing school. Good luck and Godspeed. You're going to upset a lot of people who purchase houses, build communities around where they are about to move and close. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Leslie Eden and Mary Fulkerson. You will state your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Leslie Eden and I am the Baxter PTA president and a former district parent and teacher from Baxter. I would like to thank you for your service and dedication to our students and community. I'd like to share with you why Baxter should continue to be a neighborhood school. This is Baxter's fiftieth year. As both an educator and a parent, I understand that schools like Baxter are more than just places of learning. They are community hubs that provide stability, support, and a sense of belonging. Baxter is an essential part of our community, our neighborhood and district, and I believe its closure would have a significant negative consequence for not only the children, but the broader community. We have a large SLC program that you've heard. Baxter is a Title One, uh, school and it benefits our east side student. Baxter serves a high percentage of students with low income families who depend on our nutritional, uh, daily nutrition at school, breakfast and lunch. They come very hungry. As a Title One school, Baxter is able to, um, have a full time counselor. We have an interventionist to meet our social, emotional, and academic needs of these student populations. Two of the schools where Baxter students are to be relocated are not Title One. They don't have those services. Don't think you can get them because I hear we have money problems. And, um, I don't believe that, um, they have the capacity to fully support these populations. We have a food pantry. We provide, uh, food for our families on We provide uh food for our families on long weekends and breaks. We have an after-school program. Baxter is a vital neighborhood school fostering a sense of community and connection while offering its students a safe and positive learning environment. Our students walk to and from school. Our general population, only twenty-five percent uh are assigned to ride the bus, but they don't, they walk. There's only maybe twenty students on those buses. So many walk. Students might not be able to participate in after-school clubs. Dune might not have been able to. She walks the bog. Um, if um with all these great activities, because parents face transportation challenges. Baxter would make a perfect receiving school for another small school or a charter school. In Baxter's fifty years, we have had the Spanish immersion program. That left, we had multisensory instruction program. That left. Um, then we had the SBBS program. That left. And then we had SLC, which we still have. The building was extensively remodeled in nineteen ninety-nine and updated for SBBS and the SLC. Now, everything that was said earlier about graduation rates just confirmed that Baxter Elementary should remain open with its specific ability to nurture and support our east students.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Hey, good evening. My name is Mary Falkerson. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Baxter. Um, I feel like I could say ditto to a lot of the things, but one of the thing I wanted to ask you about if you received Cassia's petition to save Baxter. She, I'd given that to a gentleman in the back, and he said he was going to give it to you. She, a lot of the students thought it was a petition to save her, but it just goes to show like how much they care about each other. So, um, you know, again, we are a Title I school. I thank you for this opportunity to testify. I think that when they said that the plan was built on community of significant community input, it really didn't include us because we thought we had the two years to figure it out. And the announcement the day before Thanksgiving, as others have testified, did not give us a chance to come around and make a cohesive plan as um Bear Valley and Montessori schools have been able to do. So we do have that SLC program. Another one of our teachers will talk to that. They are very vulnerable, and we really want to protect them and make sure a really good decision is made for them because I feel like any rightsizing discussion cannot be made until you take those students into accounts. The kid just cannot be moved, you know, willy-nilly. Um, secondly, Baxter's going to be splintered into three, possibly five schools if you take into account SLC. And the loss of community will be staggering. We have a lot of kids with trauma. You add that trauma on top, it's going to take a lot of time to build up the academic and social progress that they're making. Depending on the school, you know, if they move there, they might be the only new kid in that school. And that again is very isolating. And then how many more buses are you going to need? I know, like, I live in a dis- I live in one of the neighborhood schools, and I don't consider Chester Valley to be my neighborhood. It's on the other side of the lake. They can't just walk to it. So two of the schools are immersion. Have you looked at how those students are going to fit in on the neighborhood side of that? They can't jump in it, third grade, second grade, fifth grade, they can't just do that. And I know they said that they would um with our Title I friends, help them figure out how to fill out a free or reduced lunch form. But that doesn't change the hardship. Like we've said, we have the food pantry, we have the free breakfast and lunch. You know, we have the counselor, we have the interventionist, our, our students' needs going to be met. So um we are, I'm also wondering like if we will literally fit into the schools. I provided you a document that shows that when you take your capacity numbers, your enrollment numbers, and divide that by the capacity, that we don't fit. It's ninety-two to ninety-eight percent. Whereas if you take Nunaca Valley, it's at the bottom, and you bring it to us, we can still fit with our um SLC program intact. So we hope that you will consider that. We really care deeply about our students as staff and families, and we want to really make a good decision for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Sarah Pettit, uh by telephone. Um, if you will star six and unmute, and Brian Falkerson and Libby Pedersen in person. Ms. Pettit, um if you will go ahead and unmute, you have three minutes.
Okay. Um, IEP's five oh four plans, speech therapy.
I'm sorry, say again.
Excuse me. Um, okay, I'm sorry. Um, five oh four plans, speech therapy, counseling. These are all the things that have been met at a hundred percent for my children while being bobcats. Friends who've turned into families, the teachers who've, who've turned into lifelong friends. Who've also turned learning into core memories. We've been with Baxter for many years. My oldest child is second, is in her second year of college. My youngest has grown up in Baxter. She was a bobcat before she even knew it. Baxter's future should not have a price tag. Baxter has been our home away from home between, or, sorry. We've watched our children grow through Baxter from kindergarten to college. Baxter staff has helped my children grow into the successful young children, teens, and adults they are today. Take into consideration to take the money out of the po- out of the pockets from the board before you take an entire school away from the children. To upright, to uproot and rearrange their lives, because the budget isn't fair to a child. It's the board's responsibility to do what's right. Your poor budget planning should not cost bobcats their home away from home. And then I have faith here who wants to say something as well. Go ahead, you got one minute?
We don't normally let people share time, but if your daughter wants to speak for a minute, that would be fine.
She got phone shy, that's okay, thank you.
We can understand. Thank you very much for your testimony. And back to the dais, if one of you will state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Libby Peterson. I'm a special education SLC teacher at Baxter Elementary. I'm here tonight on behalf of the fifty families that attend the largest structured learning program. I want you to focus on that word, structured. Students who attend the structured learning classroom require just that, structure. In January of twenty twenty-two, just three years, three years ago, students were uprooted from Tarmigan Elementary and moved to Baxter. Just this past summer, due to resizing, more students were uprooted again and moved. Now ASD wants to move the most vulnerable students again, making students attend four different schools, and they haven't even reached fifth grade. Students who require the most intense structure of all in this district, and ASD wants to yet move them again. With every move, students are losing out on months and months of academics and social skills. Our students in the SLC program can take up to six months to regain their academics and social skills every time they are moved. Remember, they have never moved homes. It's ASD that is moving them from school to school. They do not deserve this treatment. They need stability. They need structure. At Baxter, we focus on the school as a whole. The school focuses on our student, students being included through inclusion. Students in the SLC program walk the halls. They join classes. The entire school knows them because they are a part of the school like every other student. It has taken years to build rapport with the teachers and students. The combined efforts of the SLC staff and parents has created an environment within Baxter in which all students are accepted. The typical developing students are the peers that these students will have when they move on to middle school. Those students will be their advocates in the general education setting. Closing Baxter and moving all students around is extremely hurtful to their social life and their academics. I'm asking that you consider the detrimental impacts closing Baxter is going to cause to the SLC program and to the Baxter families.
Thank you. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brian Falkerson, and let me just start by saying the amount of irony of starting this meeting, talking about interventions to help high school kids graduate, and then moving to talking about closing elementary schools where those basic core skills are learned, just gives me a headache. Um, my wife, Mary, uh has been a teacher at Baxter for fifteen years. And when she started there, Baxter was a thriving slingerland school, had three hundred and fifty students, and a principal who had a vision. When SBBS was moved to Baxter, a hundred students moved out. And those students have not come back. And in the last five years, Baxter has had four different principals. Three of those principals were first-year principals, and two of them are no longer in education. A school cannot survive without strong leadership. And that is laid on the district. If, if you close Baxter, what you're doing is you're just admitting defeat. Baxter has a, a population base. Well, there are a hundred and seventy-nine students who are zoned for Baxter who do not attend Baxter. If even half of those students came back, Baxter would be at three hundred and sixty, and would not need to be, would not even be on this list. So it, all it requires is for you to give Baxter a cha-chance. Give Baxter the two years. Give Baxter a principal who is committed to the welfare of its students. And in two years, you'll even, you'll wonder why Baxter was even on this list. Because the community of Baxter, as you have seen, believes in Baxter. And there's absolutely no way that there would be a reason for it to close. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Libby Peterson and Sarah McCauley. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, um Sarah McCauley and Michael Davis. Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I got you. Um, Rachel Gage, the second person, thank you. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Sarah McCauley. Thank you for hearing my testimony this evening. I sent an email a few weeks ago trying to appeal to the cerebral part of the decision you have to make tonight. I came in person today to appeal to the emotional part. I spent today trying to figure out what my best method was. And at the end of the day, the only thing I could come up with is the thing that I have to offer you is my heart. I'll give it to you to hold until you're finished voting. I ask you to be careful with it. There's nothing more terrifying than living with your heart outside of your body. It's just what happens when you have children. Hearts bruise and they break. I need mine. I need it to work for another thirty to fifty years. I don't know how many consecutive life sentences I'm going through right now, but I'm going to serve my time, and I need you to keep my heart intact. Autism spectrum disorders run in my family. At least four people in two generations that I'm aware of, I don't know about my extended family. My nephew's a young adult who suffered greatly through his school experience. His school was concerned about his academic achievements, but not his social achievements. If you know kids on the autism spectrum, they have a lot of quirks. His school didn't tolerate his quirks. They didn't teach the other students to tolerate his quirks, and he was ostracized. By the time he finished grade school, he was such a pariah that it followed him into middle school. My sister was left with the choice to pull him out of that school district and drive him thirty minutes each way for the rest of his school career. So that not only could he have an education, but he could have friends as well. When my son was diagnosed with an autism spectrum disorder, I went to my family for guidance because after my nephew's experience, I didn't know, not know how to get my son through that experience himself. And what they told me is that whenever you go to a meeting for your son, you bring your husband. Because otherwise, they are going to look at you like you are just a crazy helicopter mom, and they will dismiss everything you have to say. So I did. And when I brought my son to first grade, expecting to have an adversarial relationship with his school, I never found it. Because Fire Lake has always been a supportive community to their children and their special learning classes. If you keep Fire Lake open, I'll continue to look for my adversary. I don't think I'm going to find it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. And if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name is Rachel. I'm with Fire Lake Elementary. Um, I've already talked about the SLC and the significant impact moving the program will cause. I stand by what I said, um but if you haven't heard me already, then you truly do not understand, and you won't hear me now. So I chose to speak again today because I wanted to rebut some of what Mr. Anderson said to you earlier in the meeting today. But I do want to start by pointing out um that the schools in Eagle River are clustered to one side of Eagle River. We have Alpenglow, Ravenwood, Homestead, Eagle River Elementary, and then Fire Lake, Birchwood, and Chugiak. By closing Fire Lake, you risk setting up our community to have the same issues you are currently dealing with in Anchorage when the, while the district is trying to close schools that are clustered together. And if you look at Eagle River, building is going to occur on this side of town, as is already happening. So I want to talk about what Mr. Anderson said earlier today. Uh, he talked about boundary exemptions into Eagle River Elementary. He said the vast majority of which is the optional program. Fifty to eighty-plus parents driving to Eagle River Elementary, and he said a significant number are from the Fire Lake Boundary Zone. He said if Fire Lake was to close, those parents would then likely receive busing, and that would alleviate some of the traffic. The same could be said if the optional program were moved to Fire Lake. Only those families would receive busing because they are in our zone. Then he said, quote, although we can't prevent or change the roads, the parking lot, or the entry of the school, I think you would see several buses come to this school and eliminate quite a few vehicles, end quote. There, he is wrong. We can change the roads. We can change the parking lot. We can change the entry because at Fire Lake, we don't have those issues. Then he said, quote, they are correct. It is a crowded street like many other schools in the district, end quote. But again, that is not the case at Fire Lake. I'm not suggesting that you shut down Eagle River Elementary instead of us. I'm telling you that the district made a mistake in choosing Fire Lake. They did not do their due diligence. And now their arguments are solely made to justify that mistake. So again, I thank you for listening. I thank you for reading our letters, for coming to our school, for hearing us, letting us know that you are listening. And thank you for your consideration for Fire Lake.
Thank you for your testimony. Charles McKee and Dr. Amber Meritz, I believe. I'm not sure if I can read it correctly.
I have thirty.
Thank you. And Dr. Bamber, if you can spell your name, we're having trouble reading it. We just want to get it right for the record.
Capital B A M B E R G hyphenated, capital M E R R I T T. First name is Gloria.
Thank you. You have three minutes.
I, uh, come before you today as a concerned citizen. As a taxpayer. And a mental health professional. I would like to thank you for letting me appear and to just provide my information on some research. In reference to our district. The question is, if East Side Elementary Schools closes, will the education budget change? And how much would it help? With the right sizing plan of the Anchor School District to fix the infrastructure. Of the Anchor School District. The Anchor School District right sizing plan is to close underutilized elementary schools. And consolidate students because of the decline of students enrollment of six thousand five hundred students. Actually, the research was provided by the superintendent and he went as back as twenty ten. Over the same period, a large student population switched. To number one correspondent schools, number two district supported schooling. Options, number three, future reducing of the number of students in the classroom. In the enrollment in the correspondent schools, though, it went up to one hundred and eighteen percent. That's, uh, some research from twenty ten. Also, some research and information from December eleventh, twenty twenty four. Our governor spoke and he said. That he has a plan to introduce an education bill pairing funding increase reform. He says, quote, we're going to introduce a bill on education funding that believe will come, come be comprehensive. Period. I'll be a, uh, there will be a combination of increased funding and again. Outcomes like we discussed. Last year. Number one charter schools, that's, that was a discussion. Number two correspondent schools and number three, the neighborhood schools. Well, some information I would like for you to consider before you vote tonight. Have we provided adequate staffing and support for the current? Staff members? And are we supporting special education and special needs students according to the laws that we have on the books? And also, the right sizing plan. Why is it specifically? Because I didn't see it on, on the website.
Your time has expired. Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. McLeary, if you'll state your name for the record, you have three minutes.
My name's, of course, I'm a beneficiary here to the McKee Trust. My name is Charles Edison McKee. And you have those documents to affirm that, that I turned in. I also like you to look at, uh, recording District three oh one Anchorage. Under my name, Charles McKee. Filed and uploaded. And that was last Thursday. And the title of that is a, um. Pre judicial fix. And you'll see in there an astounding representation of our. Shall we say civil entry caused by. Representatives. In legislature in the past. So I would bring to you the, the. The fact that I have recorded a Sestakay Trust. And that is. Under judiciary relationships on page. Five fifty-three out of Black Slaw Dictionary. And you paged, uh, turn to page fifty-four, seven fifty-four, it talks about the Sestakay Trust and its relationship. To me, to anybody else, and the response. Of the public officer involving tier one federal, tier two state. Tier three corporation, if they're involved in undermining you substantially, then the corporate, uh. Those. Activity of the agency and or agent can be held responsible. And that is the case with me and, uh, the corporation of court. And its agent involving himself personally into my affairs. Here in Anchorage. And, uh, so I bring that to your attention and my trust is nine hundred billion dollars. I have a claim for about eighty million dollars plus and growing. And so when I acquire that. Remedy. Then. The residual impact of that. Would obviously impact the educational system in Anchorage because I've been here since I was thirteen. I'm seventy-one now. That being said, I already went to the school, I mean, I already went to Anchorage Assembly the tenth of September and voiced that. Because I owe an obligation to the Lutheran and Catholic Social Services because I'm indebted to their. So you could look at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Your time has expired. That brings us to the end of our list of people who have signed up to testify. Do thank everyone who has come.
You got all of them?
I think so. Um, do appreciate everyone coming and, and speaking to us. With that, we move to section E on the consent agenda. See anyone wish to pull items on the consent agenda? Member lessons.
I'd like to pull memo zero six one, please.
With, uh, no objection from other members on the board, that will be moved to the first action item. There's someone that needs to, to, uh, be available for that, that needs to be home as quickly as possible. So. Yes. Item twelve under the consent agenda. And rather than putting it at the end of the action items, it'll be the first action item. Anyone else wish to pull an item? Seeing no hands.
Mr. President, I move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Is everyone prepared to vote by machine? I know this takes us back a few years. And you have approved the consent agenda. That brings us to action items and the first one, uh, number sixty-one, if I gotta have a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number sixty-one, acceptance of grant award FY twenty twenty-five student support and academic. Enrichment SSAE grant program as revised to accept the FY twenty twenty-five student support and academic enrichment SSAE. Grant award from the Department of Education in the amount of, uh, three million, two hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred forty-two dollars for the services provided between ten one twenty-four and nine thirty twenty-five. This funding supports year two of a five-year grant.
This is our second.
Second.
Moved and seconded for ASD memorandum number sixty-one, discussion. Member lessons.
Yeah, just to refresh everyone's memory, this memo is before us tonight. Uh, because it was tabled from the November fourth meeting. Um, it is the acceptance of the grant award FY twenty twenty-five student support and academic enrichment. Or SSAE grant program. Essentially, it's the second year of funding from the U.S. Department of Education to support implementation of the academies of Anchorage in the five-year. Um, award that, uh, sort of has broadly been announced, um, or was, was announced, uh, you know, fifteen, eighteen months ago. Um, prior to the November fourth meeting, I had drafted and submitted to our secretary. A substitute memo for potential board consideration, but that, that document was never, uh, brought to the board's attention during that meeting because. This memo was tabled until tonight. Um, that substitute memo was however attached to the agenda. And, um, in the interim, the Governance Committee really graciously allowed me to share, uh, the substance of the substitute memo. In the late November Governance Committee meeting, and I really appreciated the robust discussion that we had at that time. Tonight, the existing memo that you see before you, uh, has a slight revision courtesy of the administration and, and I do want to say that it. Uh, likely reflects, reflects the conversation from governance. Uh, and I appreciate the administration acknowledging, uh, the pivot that happened on November eighteenth. Uh, which was to not move forward with the academies, uh, as initially, uh, conceptualized with respect to that, um, schedule change. So the current addition and the, the revision that you see before you in the memo, zero six one. Uh, asserts that the administration is currently working to refine. The academies of, uh, Anchorage Implementation Plan and may adjust the use of grant funds in future years. And I think that's really important. However. I still see when I look at the memo as it stands, kind of a fundamental disconnect. Uh, because the pertinent facts section of the memo remains unchanged. And it still asserts that we're going to be implementing wall-to-wall academies in essentially year three, which is FY twenty-six. With the grants and general fund funds, even though, um. That's not necessarily the case, right? We've been advised even in this meeting that there's going to be. An adjusted approach reflecting our fiscal realities. Um, so I really do appreciate, um. That, that adjustment, uh, it's a challenging adjustment to make. Um, that said. I am interested in bringing before you, um, a substitute. To my substitute, um, which is, I believe you have a paper copy. It's, uh, it would be memorandum zero six one S one. So I move to substitute memorandum zero six one S one for memorandum zero six one.
We have a short eddies.
I appreciate the eddies, but it seems like when I did my prep for this board meeting on Sunday, this was not in the packet. That is against our our process.
Okay.
And which means the public has not had an opportunity to to do this, to to look at this memo as well.
Correct. So so let me ask, is there a second to the substitute motion? Seeing seeing none, it fails to be considered. And we are back to memorandum sixty-one as was entered on the entered on the agenda. And I'm going to have to apologize, we did not actually get a motion putting number sixty-one on the floor.
Yes, he did.
Did you?
Yes.
Obviously, my memory is not going long term here. So the original item number sixty-one is on the floor for consideration. If we do not have a second for the substitute motion, it dies for lack of a second. And I'm not seeing anyone second it. What's before us is item number sixty-one as on the agenda originally. And this could all be reintroduced at a later time. Is there discussion on item number sixty-one? Seeing none, we will put that to a vote. And it should be on your screen for you now. Student Member Pack, if you would vote.
Yes.
Thank you. And if members will vote, you have passed item number sixty-one on a six to one vote. Now move to ASD memorandum number zero seven one.
Mr. President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number zero seven one, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six pro forma financial planning outlook and budget development guidance. The recommended actions to approve and authorize the superintendent to prepare the ASD FY twenty-five, twenty-six preliminary financial plan and budget in accordance with the financial projections and budget guidance set forth in this memorandum.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Moved and seconded to consider item number seventy-one. Is there discussion? Member Bellamy, did you have a comment? Or okay, thank you. Seeing no, no hands or comment, I will ask the Sullivan to put it on your screens for a vote. And student member pack, if you would vote on the item number seventy-one.
Yes.
Should be on your screen now. And you have accepted the pro forma financial planning outlook and budget development guidance. That brings us to item number two under action items, number seventy-nine.
Mr. President, I move to approve ASD memorandum number seventy-nine, ASD Anchorage Assembly Joint Resolution Regarding State Funding for Schools. Recommended action is to approve memo seventy-nine, which is titled "A Joint Resolution of the Anchorage Municipal Assembly, the Anchorage School Board in Support of the Fair Inflation Adjusted State Funding to Require Required to Maintain a Public School System and Increase Student Performance."
A second.
Moved and seconded for the joint resolution on state funding. Is there discussion? Member Higgins.
Just for the audience sake, the working with the assembly on trying to get additional funding for the state, their support in working with the Anchorage School District, I greatly appreciate it. It it got it's a unified effort here to help kids. And I just want to say thank you for them. Thank you.
Other Member Lessons.
Thank you. I think we had a chance to speak about this in one of our committee meetings last last week. But for tonight's purposes, just a quick reminder that this would be the second year, should our body pass a joint resolution, the second year in a row, that the board and assembly would pass a joint resolution in support of the fair inflation adjusted funding required to maintain our school system. And so the pertinent facts are by and large very similar to last year's. The figures have been updated. There's a little bit of a history lesson as and part of it. I think a couple of critical pieces that were added to to this resolution were analysis from the end of September by the State of Alaska's Legislative Finance Division regarding the scale of education funding. If the BSA had been adjusted for inflation all the way back to July first, twenty ten, which is the start of our twenty FY eleven school year, twenty twenty-ten, eleven is FY eleven. So the division, so it incorporates the state's own data. And the division determined that the peak year over the past fifteen years adjusted for inflation is FY eleven, which would be seventy-five, seventy-nine and FY twenty-four dollars. While the FY twenty-five, that's this year's figure, is fifty-eight, fifteen and FY twenty-four dollars, full technical. Anyways, if you adjust the FY eleven figure to projected FY twenty-five dollars, that would total seventy-seven, sixty-eight. And here's the core, to match the buying power, because ultimately we're buying services, we're buying healthcare, we're buying salaries, we're buying reams of paper to match the buying power of the FY eleven BSA. This year, the BSA would need to increase by one thousand eight hundred and eight dollars from fifty-nine, sixty to seventy-seven, sixty-eight. However, that's this year, and we're talking about next year. So the second main piece of information incorporated into this joint resolution adjusts the the state of Alaska's Legislative Finance Division, the eighteen oh eight figure for this year, by two percent for FY twenty-six. And so that's where this figure of nineteen sixty-three comes from. So I just wanted to take a little moment to clarify that there's a lot of information that is very similar because our situation has not changed. But I did want to make sure folks are understanding that it's incorporating the best data that we have. And so I would urge unanimous support, and it would be wonderful to send the document over to our colleagues in the assembly.
Any other comment? Member Donald.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to highlight in the second resolve items two, three and four. And that's directing and appropriating necessary funds to pay for a state-funded Iser study of the district cost factor is item two. We actually never envisioned when we when we drafted the current funding system for education in the state, that we would go twenty years without a district cost factor study and discriminate so objectively against our students in this community. It's an outrage. And the fact that the legislature has failed to appropriate, you know, a de minimis amount of money compared to the overall education budget to accomplish something which is objectively unfair to this community is an outrage, in my opinion. We so bad that about five years ago, working with Chair Trainee of the Assembly at the time, we actually, the Assembly appropriated the funds to conduct an Iser study of the district cost factor. But Iser said that since it would be funded by Anchorage, the other the rest of the state wouldn't trust it. Then we went to the school, this School Board Association of Alaska and asked if we gave you the money, would you do it? And they said, no, we're afraid to do it because Anchorage, you know, it it's too politically hot potato. There'd be winners and losers. We don't want to get blamed with that, so we won't do it either. So we made every attempt to find some neutral third party that would do it. And we've been unable to do that. So it's all laid back on the legislature now to do this. And we just recently hired an expert analysis of this. And in talking to him, his guess was pretty much the same as mine financially, that this is costing our students something close to thirty million dollars in fair state funding a year. And so and that was the expert we had hired here. Number three, passing additional legislation that would update the district cost factor on a triennial basis is just a great idea. It's something that I wish we would have thought of at the time we wrote these laws. We just never occurred to us that we'd go this long without having one done. So mea culpa, I wish I would have thought of that thirty years ago. And then passing additional legislation, number three, passing additional legislation that would update the district, well, number four, actually, return to the historic models of cost sharing for capital projects. I think there's a clear constitutional question in the suspension of bond reimbursement for only some citizens in this state on capital construction of schools. I don't think that passes the red face fairness test to this community that that was suspended impacting us so disparately from other communities around the state. And so I think that's just an essential element of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other kind of Member Bellamy?
Just a real quick couple of comments. First of all, if for the members of the public who hasn't, might not have had an opportunity to read the resolution, please read it. It actually gives not just a historical, but a historical and our current overview of our currents, our historical and current situation. So I do want to thank, we had a work group that worked with the with Assembly members, I think it was Bronga, Brawley and Rivera. Who else? Oh, Martinez and Mr. Martinez, you're right. And then we had our work group, Member Lessons, was it Andy and me? Anyway, Member Lessons. Anyway, member lessons uh did yeoman's job in putting all this together. Especially when, you know, looking at trying to make sure that we incorporated all the things that member Donnie just referenced. Uh, but also what what it means for us. I mean, if it if we have to cut five hundred and fifty eight positions, that's not, that's true. I I mean, that's true. We don't want to have to do that. Uh, but it does, um, it really is a uh, it's aspirational. Uh, but I think these are the things that that our legislators need to know. And so I do want to thank um, the assembly, we discussed it with them at our last joint meeting. Uh, and I think they will be approving it first of the year. If all goes well. Well, thank you. I urge every uh, the full support of the resolution.
Thank you. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Miss Sullivan to put it to a vote. And. Member pack, did you want to do an advisory vote?
Yes.
Good. Thank you. And we have unanimously passed the joint resolution on state funding. That brings us to revised number four memorandum number seven, three ASD rightsizing plan.
Mr. President, I moved to approve ASD memorandum number seventy three ASD rightsizing plan. The recommended actions to approve and authorize the superintendent to implement the closure of the following schools at the end of the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year. In order to right size the district's infrastructure Baxter Fire Lake, Lake Hood and Nunaka Valley Elementary Schools. Each of the four buildings would be repurposed for an existing ASD charter school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve memorandum number zero seven, three. Is there a discussion?
Mr. President.
Member Jacobs.
With your indulgence, I have a series of amendments I'd like to walk the board through. First is, I'd like to move uh Jacob's amendment one S. There's a second, I'll speak to my motion.
Second.
Yep, so. All right, for the record, I'll read in um amendment one S unless you don't think it's necessary, Mr. Chair.
Um.
It is posted to our agenda.
I'm trying to remember how long it is. Um, I don't believe the whole thing needs to be uh ready, but.
Perfect, then I'll then I'll just speak to it. Um. The memorandum, which is posted to our agenda and has been um, since the agenda was posted online publicly. Um, addresses a few different items um in an attempt to make uh this motion more palatable for at least myself and also addresses. Um, known potential improvements and adjustments to this plan, which I think benefit our entire community and um. Promise to improve access to transformational uh educational opportunities for ASD students. Um, it it does not and should not reflect um. A an effort to um remove uh the option for board members to continue modifying this memorandum. I'm sure they support this amendment. With that said, uh, the um amendment first would propose that the repurposing plan for Lakewood Elementary School include. Um, consideration by administration of not just a charter school, but also an existing district special program. Um, we've heard multiple board members express um skepticism and concern, uh, myself included about locating a charter school. I'm in the corner of West Anchorage. And so I think um, we want the, I would prefer the district to do diligence to ensure that the best possible outcome is. Um, present for that facility should it be uh repurposed. The second is to bring um. An equal enrollment cap for Tudor element Tudor elementary Montessori program to make a K six, which is in line with Denali Montessori program. Um, we've heard from families, at least I've heard from families, which I think that that is a solution um which brings parity and would be appreciated by those families that choose to make that choice. With minimal impacts to programming. Uh, the third item is uh prompts the administration to provide a amended six year capital improvement plan. To the board, which re prioritizes uh capital investment in Wonder Park Elementary. For those who may not remember, uh, Wonder Park. Um, had a prominent place on our six year CIP as recently as just a few years ago, um, then was removed. This would restore that um place in the CIP and um related process. As administration reviews to see what capital, uh, low level of capital investment best suits, um, ensuring that the building has increased educational adequacy. Uh, the amendment also relinquishes management control for the uh large parcel of land, which is about twenty five acres, a two nine five five molding road. Uh, to the MOA uh for a purpose that they will deem fit. Um, I personally have thoughts, but I want to stay in my lane as a member of the school board, um, and then will certainly advocate as a citizen once the municipal um leadership. Has that parcel of land available to them. Next, the um memorandum amendment would prompt district administration to call begin collaborating. On a student transportation support plan with any charter program being considered for placement. Uh, at Baxter Fire Lake, Lakewood and Nunaka, should this memorandum pass as currently drafted. Um, the proposed plans will leverage statutory funding along with um savings that'll be available from the charter school program budget. Um, as we know, our transportation budget is subsidized heavily uh through investment by the municipality of Anchorage. Uh, because the um Alaska legislature has failed to adjust those costs for inflation since FY sixteen. Um, and so uh the um plans for supporting our charter programs and increased transportation. Uh, where currently there is none will likely require additional subsidy as well. And so that's why the collaboration will need to take place. And then lastly, um, is a, uh, I think a improved um item, which hasn't gone address, but was it stated by um administration, which is. Um, was suggested by member lessons, which I appreciate, which is to begin collaborating with charter schools to um work to prioritize placements inside a neighborhood where a school may be placed. Um, and then present an act after action report uh to the board, uh, no later than ten one twenty five um. On the progress and process of right sizing. Would be happy to answer any questions. And I think those are the highlights and much of this should look familiar because I've been talking about this one for quite some time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I guess I just want to hit the first point, expanding the repurposing plan review. Is the intent of the administration to bring that back to us to give us a chance to review it and approve a change or is that being delegated? Right now, we're being asked to basically remove kids, not current kids in in the school to move out. What's going to happen to that school? Is that something we will be reviewing again?
Um, through the president, uh, member Higgins, my understanding of the order of operations is right now the board is focused on the closure conversation for neighborhood schools. Should this uh memo memorandum and amendment pass, the next step would be. I believe it's the fifth bullet point where we'd start collaborating with ASD charter programs to start determining who um may or may not be a good fit for those schools. Then the next step would be working directly with the charter schools to work on some sort of um shared memorandum of understanding that would lay out all of the different. Uh, requirements uh that that we would have as a district to ensure that the charter school. Um, has a various underrepresented groups represented, given that they will have new capacity. Um, should a charter school occupy a a neighborhood school? I hope that answers the question. So essentially first the memorandum. Then should it pass, we will work directly with various charter schools to identify candidates for the space, but that would go back to the board for final approval. Similar to how we did um with the um Abbott loop transition.
Well, the language in here talks about repurposing for both an existing district special program and or. An existing ASD charter school, that's why else.
Oh, and and that I might need to lean on the writer of the amendment to clarify.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Yep. So to answer the question directly, um, this prompts uh that particular bullet point prompts administration to consider not just a charter program, but also. Um, a special program. Um, we've heard uh just one example, a member bring up um the possible match of um. Whaley as a a fit in um, well, at least one of the buildings. Um, and so I think this provides additional flexibility to administration while we're providing some basic level of direction. Um, in this memorandum, um, it is not intended to get ahead of the conversation as to what happens next, but since that language is included in the memorandum. Um, it's intended to provide additional flexibility to make sure that we have the best possible fit as administrations begins their work um on what's next. Thanks.
Member Donald.
Yeah, I'd move to divide the vote on the second sort of whereas here, um, which is to expand the Tudor Elementary Montessori program with grades. C K three, six. Um, and and have a separate vote on that section. There's a lot of unrelated things rolled together here and that particular one is of particular interest to to me and I'd like to be able to vote on it separately.
There is a motion to divide the question uh by making. Bullet point two, uh, a separate amendment.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on a motion to divide, is that? I can't remember if that's debated.
I have it, but it's, I appreciate the second. It's kind of self evident that it stands alone as an issue. It's not related to the other things in this proposal.
Okay. Um.
Thank you, Carl. Yeah.
Okay. Um, and so, yeah, we'll vote now on whether to divide the question. Yes.
Want a clarification? Oh, okay. Question answer.
Member Bellamy, did you have a question? Member Bellamy, did you have a question? Okay. Is there an objection from any board member about dividing the question?
Uh, since it was seconded by the maker, I don't think so.
Strong endorsement. Uh, if no one has an objection, then the motion will be divided. Um, the amendment before the board now. Is the second bullet point, expand the Tudor Elementary School Montessori program. To grades K through six for the twenty five, twenty six school year and beyond, which will align the program scope. With ASD's other closely related program Denali Montessori. Do we have any discussion on? That amendment? Member Wilson.
I just have a question because um I just wanted to confirm that that is the request of Tudor Elementary or of Tudor Montessori. That is their request or is it our request for them?
Mr. Chair, I can answer that question if you'd like. So I uh, thank you for the question, member Wilson. I I did have spoken with stakeholders at um Tudor Elementary, specifically with our Montessori program. Um, they value this opportunity for choice. Um, some of the students and families may not opt to elect it, but having the opportunity. Um, in line with what exists elsewhere in the district seems fair. Thank you.
I I would like um, the administration to respond to this as well.
Thank you uh, through the president. Uh, this is certainly um feasible for sure. I, the only drawback that I would bring to the board's attention is that. Given the fact that the district has moved district wide to six, eight middle schools, we are seeing a trend where some schools are choosing to go. Um, to a K five model from a K six. So for example, Aquarian Charter School, I believe um on this agenda or an upcoming one. Um, will be asking the board to move from a K six model to a K five, and that's because they're seeing. Um, fewer sixth graders enroll in that grade level, so they can pursue other opportunities in other district facilities. Um, the same um could happen to Tudor Montessori, but with that said, I have heard from many community members. Where they've expressed an interest in having a a high fidelity Montessori model that's multi grade up to sixth grade. So I think the the amendment is appropriate and poses um small, um, but a transparent risk to the district.
Other discussion, member Higgins?
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the Montessori program with. Family been in it for a long time and the and the and Montessori program, you got the kindergarten by yourself, but then you have one, two, three in one class, four, five, six in the other class. And so the the social interaction, the kids teaching younger kids and learning back and forth. Is a component of the Montessori system with all of the various special types of learning. Um, focused on, you know, the the visual touching and and sounds. And and so this allows it to complete that sixth grade is being with fifth and fourth graders is part of the program that they like. Uh, I know there's interest uh with some of the Montessori family and being able to do that. Uh, some of them feel like since everybody else is going on to six, I'd probably be better go ahead anyway. So I'm not sure how every family is going to react, but I know that there's real interest with the Montessori program. For the purity of the program that they've got, they they didn't opt for trying to go to charter school, do something else. They want to be as part of the district. But uh, this is an important issue to them.
Thank you very much. Any other comment? Seeing no hands, I'll ask Miss Sullivan to put this to a vote. Should be on your screen. Again, this is a vote on the amendment to the main question. Uh, strictly bullet point number two. Member pack, if you'd like to offer an advisory vote? Yes.
I apologize.
Oops. Sorry, we have a technical difficulty on voting. Okay, the amendment is before you now.
So a yes vote just basically takes it out of this memorandum, I mean, out of this.
A a yes vote amends the main motion.
As an amendment to the main motion. There was no objection to dividing the vote, so a bullet point two became a new main motion, standalone motion. And now that's before us to say yes or no.
Okay, I I took that as it became a standalone amendment.
No, it's not an amendment. It's a new main motion, separate motion than the rest of the text.
Uh, I'm going to ask if everyone else on the board understands that correctly as well.
No, no, no. When you divide the vote, you've got an original main motion that has multiple things. No, no, no. When you divide the vote, you've got an original main motion that has multiple things in it. It may be unrelated. And so if you, if the, first of all, the chair approves that these things are possible to divide. Make it fair to vote on them, so you don't have to vote for something you don't like or something you do like, because they're all mushed together, right? So when you divide, you know, which we did, we unanimously agreed to set this as a separate vote. So now what's before us is a vote on whether or not we like this idea. And approve this, which is the bullet point two.
So my reading is because the question that was divided was an amendment to the main motion. It then became two amendments to the main motion.
It's not an amendment, because if it was an amendment to the main motion, then it would rejoin the main motion. That would defeat the entire purpose of dividing. It's now a separate motion on its own to be voted up or down based on the merits of it.
I see logic in both ways. So the, the main thing to me is the clarity, and I'm going to accept Member Donnelly's explanation. But I do want to make sure that members understand. In essence, we passed, or we are voting on bullet point two as a standalone motion. Is everybody? Clear on that? And, and we can always go argue about Roberts some other day. Okay, so it is a standalone motion on its own. And it did pass seven zero. Member Pack, did you want to give a advisory vote? Yes, thank you. And then to the board, just to make sure, so what we are left with. Is the remainder of that amendment, which is still an amendment to the main motion. So open for discussion while Miss Sullivan gets everything back together again. You still have the rest of the amendment. To the main motion. One of the things I'll ask while she is doing that. Does the administration have any comment about relinquishing management of the twenty four and three quarter acre parcel? On Wolden Road?
Thank you, Mister President. So my assessment is that there's little risk to the district relinquishing that land. We do have quite a bit of excess capacity as the, the board understands. And should there be an increase in enrollment, there's always the possibility that we can look at other models of renovating or rebuilding schools. For example, we could build upwards instead of having a single level elementary school as an example, if we were so stretched for capacity that we needed. More facilities for students. And with that said, by relinquishing this land back to the municipality. It could be used for a high impact initiative for the betterment of the entire community. I would leave it to the municipality to define what that looks like, but it opens up the potential to do something positive for the community. With that said, Mister Anderson, do you have anything to add?
No, not at this time.
Yeah, thank you very much. Other discussion on the remainder of the amendment? Not seeing any hands. What's before you is the. Motion to amend the main question by adopting. The remaining part of Jacob's Amendment one S. Oh, lessons, member lessons. That should be on your screen, and Member Pack, if you wish to give an advisory vote? And we have amended memorandum number seventy three.
Mister Chair?
The main question is before you again, Member Jacobs.
With your leeway, I would move lessons Jacob's amendment number one. If you'd like, I can read this on the record. It's a bit shorter, half a page. Otherwise, it has been publicly posted as well, so I can just speak to it if you'd like. Okay, I'll just move to speaking to it and not read it verbatim. This amendment in particular, I would first express appreciation for member lessons and the collaboration that took place, which made this possible. It acknowledges that the rightsizing plan is currently constituted. Is, is missing a number of buildings that we, we started the conversation with, which were taken off by administration after the initial proposal was released. Which I think reflects the process was refined and that we heard and listened to the communities of district. With that said, I think there's a need to acknowledge that there are sections of the municipality of Anchorage that are left unaddressed in the excess capacity that exists. In our elementary schools by the current proposal, which is really focused on West Anchorage, East Anchorage and Eagle River at present. This memorandum would first direct the superintendent to recommend one additional school for consolidation or rightsizing. This, the next school year. It acknowledges that we should prioritize removing the number of combination classes amongst elementary students and improving. On access to course offerings and providing additional supports. And, and then additionally provides flexibility for the district administration to alleviate some of the. Guardrail that existed regarding special programs, which makes sense to some facilities, preventing potentially an optimum. Candidate for consolidation or rightsizing to be presented by the administration. Happy to answer questions. Thank you.
And also I failed to ask for a second.
Second.
I'm thinking member lessons wanted to do that, so thank you. Moved and seconded. Other discussion on the proposal? Uh, member lessons?
Yeah, I appreciate Member Jacob speaking to this as the co author of this potential amendment. It really came from time, from my end of things. It came from the time I have spent looking at enrollment information and. The CIP and all the other sources of data that I could get my hands on. And I'm quite frankly really concerned, not just about school size, but when we have special programs embedded within schools. Funny things happen to FTE allocations. And in a number of our schools, the students who are on the neighborhood side of a school with a special program. Maybe their enrollment is drifting to less than optimal numbers, so they're having challenges. Standing up even one, you know, first grade class, one second grade class. So we have a number of schools with very small neighborhood side enrollments, and I, I don't want to propose the path forward, but I envision that. Some kind of a Tetris, moving some of our programs around, one or more programs around, could help optimize. FTE, that's the staffing that eventually gets to the students that are the neighborhood side of our neighborhood schools. And so that for me is the core of this. And there are certainly areas of town which are not in the current proposal, which as Member Jacobs. Shared a moment ago, they may also stand, we may still improve student outcomes. By consolidating. Students.
Member Wilson?
So. We have not yet discussed the four schools that are on the list for repurposing today. So I just, I want some clarification. Is the request. We're asking the board. To recommend to the superintendent and the administration to continue this process in future years? Essentially, that's how I'm reading it, is, is we have not voted on these four schools yet, but we're asking for, already asking for future years to look at repurposing.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, no, appreciate the question, Member Wilson. And I think this portion of the conversation is especially relevant, because. Before we've started our conversation tonight, administration has removed buildings from the rightsizing conversation. Representing significant parts of the municipality of Anchorage. So in my opinion, before we can talk about. Addressing the, the building still on this list, I think we need to acknowledge that. At least in Midtown and South Anchorage, we aren't talking about rightsizing any longer. We're talking about rightsizing in West Anchorage, East Anchorage and Eagle River. This acknowledges that gap in addressing excess capacity and other corners of our municipality. Where we should be having the conversation, which is why there were schools originally listed. Administration has made the decision that the candidates that were originally presented weren't the best candidates, and so I, this, this amendment is intended to direct administration to. Work to identify another candidate. What I would hope and expect is it's in a region of town that was underrepresented on this current memorandum. And that's the ask, and that's what the underlying amendment is for. Thanks.
And I have a question to the makers of the motion. When you say therefore the board commits to revisiting the authorization. Oh, I'm sorry, I had foot, I apologize. Then withdraw that. Other discussion? Seeing no, no hands? Or we'll pause for a moment? Are we ready for a vote? I'll ask Miss Sullivan to put a vote on your screen. Member Pack, if you wish to give an advisory vote? We have adopted lessons Jacob's amendment number one.
Mister Chair?
Yes, Member Jacobs?
Thank you, and appreciate the leeway while we get through the, I think, the series of amendments, which can hopefully the foundation for this conversation in earnest. I would move lessons Jacob's amendment number two.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Would you like to speak to your amendment?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. This amendment in particular addresses. A, a positive potential outcome where the board specifically would revisit the conversation. Should the legislature take action necessary to reverse? The underlying causes of, of why we're seeing decline in enrollment in our elementary schools. And stagnation in. Flash funding of education. It essentially indicates that the board is committing to revisiting the authorization of this amendment, should the. Legislature and the governor implement a long term fiscal plan. Enact legislation which adjusts the BSA to account for inflation since FY eleven. And enact legislation to address the BSA for inflation on an annual basis going forward, such subject to legislative appropriation. That is the, the what it does. Mister President, I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and again, the leeway. We've heard a lot of truly impactful testimony over the last few months about our extremely dire financial deficit circumstances. And the challenges facing our districts, district. We've heard a lot of positive and impactful testimony just tonight regarding passion for our public schools. I'd like to take just a moment to express my appreciation and then my own personal perspective. I think it's time to, to do what's right. It's time to bring financial stability back to public education. For more than a decade, no long term fiscal plan focused on fixing the funding flaws in Alaska's public education formula. Has passed the Alaska State Legislature. Let me say that we do have a strong group of legislators who have been fighting for us, and, and I do thank them. I'm talking about particular legislators who continue to fail in strong leadership and fail those who elected them. Next month, we have another chance to get it right. We are one of many Alaska school, school districts grappling with daunting structural deficits, declining enrollment and a broken teacher retirement system that does. Does not even fully fund social security benefits nor a pension. What Alaska needs now is the same thing Alaska needed more than a decade ago. We need courage from our elected leaders and state government to put personal agendas aside and adopt a clear vision for our future as a state. Via sustainable, long term fiscal plan. It is the legislature's responsibility to adequately fund our schools. And while I applaud the legislators who voted to override the governor's veto of SB one forty, we need to be clear. Six hundred and eighty dollars of per pupil funding was never going to fill the growing hole a lack of inflation proofing education funding has caused. I sincerely hope the thirty fourth Alaska Legislature quickly adopts fiscal policies which allow appropriate funding of public education. The University of Alaska system, an investment in a values based retirement plan, and increased supports. For working parents to include quality childcare and improve public transit and access to affordable healthcare. A primary goal of government services should be to catch residents before they fall through the cracks. Government can't fix everything, but defunding the systems government does well, and our state at a breaking point. I appreciate the leeway, and I'm glad to answer any questions before we vote on this. Someone urged you, yes, but thanks.
Other questions or comments? Member lessons?
Thank you, Member Jacobs, for introducing the amendment. Just to focus on what this would do. So if. The legislature and the governor take those actions. That support the state, that support education in an extremely timely fashion. Before the board's second meeting in February, which is when we have to pass our balanced budget. The day after we pass our balanced budget, whatever that entails, the staff, as we talked about in one of our committee meetings last week. February nineteenth begins the staffing procedures. So timeliness for, for FY twenty six, and that's going to start at the school level and. And, and just it will encompass a lot of the HR movement of staff. So. Given the additional resources that these actions, should the legislature and governor take, would generate. I think it would behoove us to. Reexamine closures. Approved tonight to see whether. Additional classrooms in each of these schools would still fit, right? Instead of two second grade classrooms, maybe we need three. So on and so forth. So this is a. A possible path forward. Should transfer, it should take place in a timely fashion.
Other comments? Member Donnelly?
And my concern is, this is essentially just intent language, because there's. Nothing in this language that couldn't be accomplished by four votes of the board at any time. The other thing is, it says. That we would only be revising, potentially talking about revising after. These three elements are adopted. I think there's times we might want to consider revising without each of these three elements being adopted. There's so many variables that can occur during a legislative session and different schemes for funding. It may not fit these, these exact three items, and I think we ought to be free to reexamine if. There's an appropriate amount of funding to justify a reex. there's an appropriate amount of funding to justify a reexamination, whether or not these particular three items are passed. So I I understand the feeling behind it, but I don't think it's necessary to include in this particular memorandum.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate the points and wanted to answer just a couple of questions. As with all intent language, it's it's never necessary. But I think it does provide a a critical function as to the board's intent and perspective. And I truly believe a majority of the the board would support this amendment should these items happen. These are this is what our state needs to reverse a decade of outmigration. This is what our state needs to retain our educators. This is what our state needs to meet its constitutional obligation to adequately fund public education, frankly. And so if these three items are addressed, I'm confident a majority of this board will value revisiting this recommendation. The board could choose to take other actions separately if something else were to occur in this, passing this amendment wouldn't preclude that from happening. This is purely intended to lay the framework for the leadership we need from Juneau this next legislative session. Thanks.
Other comments? And I would add in that in conversations with legislators, particularly ones that aren't necessarily inclined to vote for education funding is frequently the question of what is this going to buy us? Are we gonna increase the BSA and to see that money disappear? I think this makes explicit that we would commit to revisiting neighborhood school closures if the legislature will take these steps. But I don't think it precludes us from considering it if other things change that that we think are relevant and make it possible to. So I'd support this as a way of being able to send a message to legislators. This is a critical thing. It matters to your constituents. But really, unless we have a BSA increase, unless we have a long term plan, we feel like our hands are tied on it. I I support this amendment. Any other comments? Member Bellman.
Thank you. I I do appreciate the the revisiting, being able to revisit. And 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 I think as this board has done many times, we're we're not limited to just these three things. But I do think these three things are most important. Before, before you know, as a pathway to revisit. So I I will support it.
Thank you. Any other comments? I'll ask Miss Sullivan to put it before you to vote. Member PAC, if you will give an advisory vote?
Yes.
You have adopted lessons Jacobs Amendment number two. Six to one. This puts us back to the main motion. Member lessons.
Yeah, I would move lessons Amendment one, which reads, I move to strike the words like hood from the section labeled recommendation and to make a corresponding change by replacing the word four with three to read as follows. It's the administration's recommendation that the school board approve and authorize the superintendent to implement the closure of the following schools at the end of the twenty four, twenty five school year in order to right size the district's infrastructure Baxter, Fire Lake and Unac Valley Elementary Schools. Each of the three buildings would be repurposed for an existing ASD charter school.
Do I have a second? Member Higgins, I couldn't hear you. Seconded by Member Higgins. Member lessons, do you want to speak to your motion?
Sure. I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to the motion. I have spent a great deal of time with the information the administration has shared. I've pursued other sources of information in existing district portals and taken a number of site visits. And I will just say this is the most challenging vote I've been asked to make as a board member since joining the board in twenty twenty one. So while I I do believe that a turn again like hood pairing actually has its merits. Fundamentally, I see the the benefit of school consolidation line in the fact that additional teachers will be able to collaborate, lead, learn from one another, have additional adults in the building to support reduced combination classes. However, I don't think that Lake Hood in this situation is the right school to close for purposes of allocating to a charter school, which is the proposition directly before us tonight. At a numerical level, fewer K five students attend Turnigan on the neighborhood side than attend Lake Hood. While Lake Hood's capacity is four hundred and sixty nine, Turnigan's is actually larger. In addition, Turnigan has superior access to a major thoroughfare, including a pull through lane just off Northern Lights. Lake Hood, by contrast, is tucked into a neighborhood where for me, it's challenging to imagine four hundred or so cars that pick up and drop off. I am. I have been worried. I'll perhaps perhaps this concern is no longer relevant that the proposed consolidation of Lake Hood into Turnigan could potentially undermine the future of the Russian immersion program by prohibiting a kindergarten class larger than one classroom, which given K twelve attrition rates for immersion programs could be problematic in the long run. Though I recognize that there has been a trend of declining enrollment in recent years. I wouldn't want to kneecap the Russian immersion program, given Alaska's strategic place in world affairs at this moment in time. And then I will just speak at a personal level. I recognize that Lake Hood is a newer facility. It's a nineteen nineties model facility, although Turnigan had a beautiful renovation recently. But I think that the fundamental design of Lake Hood is more developmentally appropriate for students to use, especially those who may be coming from traumatic or challenging backgrounds insofar as it remains quite walkable for its current students and would either be walkable or a short bus ride for absorbed Turnigan students. It was built with restrooms and primary classrooms to allow students to practice agency in small but meaningful ways. And when I went to Lake Hood for the first time, I was really struck by Lake Hood's extensive green spaces, which it's hard to put a figure on green space, but I believe that green spaces are exceptionally important for students, mental health and well being, physical activity. And I believe that they would be really supportive of maybe the higher risk population. My understanding of the Lake Hood facility is that it's it already has defined classrooms for the SBBS program. It already has a defined classroom for music, which is different than where the music classroom is at Turnigan, which is positioned with an HVAC duct which conducts the music classroom directly into the classroom adjacent. So it's a subtle thing, but it it matters. So those were a number of the factors that really came to my mind. But procedurally, so my fundamental belief proposition before me as a board member is, do I close Lake Hood in this case to bring a charter school there? And for the purpose of public, and and I think the answer is no. But I also think that the for the purpose of public process, it's not appropriate for me to recommend the closure of an alternative school at this time. So I'm left as an individual board member, either voting for something that I don't think makes sense or amending the recommendation given to the board by redacting an element with which I disagree. So that's why I have redacted Lake Hood in this case.
Other discussion, Member Higgins.
Well, I thank you, and and I my my purpose here is that I can see Lake Hood existing and expanding and bringing other things into it. And we're focused on emptying out the schools completely when we can, we can utilize it more effectively. I mean, we got the issue of Whaley that they that I heard from Whaley. You got other issues where you don't have to take the kids out of the school, neighborhood school, and you can expand the utilization. You want you want the the preschool, you want the various odds and ends. One of the things that was discussed with Wonder Park was the idea of we can put other things into it and everything's fine that way. But that's kind of what my concern is. We're focused right now on saying that these kids are going to go out. We're not focused on how we could do it in a different sort of way. So this request is consistent with, I think we should be focused on a little bit in all of them. And there is a lot of special ed issues and we we saw a little bit of that blow up with when we talked about Turnigan Elementary and all the things that would be involved. I don't know what the plan is for all of those, but I think retaining it and expanding it just to me, those things make sense because we're being responsive to what the community wants, and I'll vote for it.
Member Wilson.
So two points, but I'll I'll start with the first. Much of what actually most of literally, most of what the maker of the motion said about they could, I could replace Baxter into all of what was said. And it's and it's all relevant. So that that's one point. The other point is I I'm I'm a little confused. Is this amendment requesting that Turnigan be Turnigan Elementary be repurposed instead of Lake Hood?
Thank you for the question. No, because it would not be appropriate to the public process at this point in time to bring Turnigan in. I am simply saying that because I disagree with the movement of Lake Hood into Turnigan, I'm redacting the closure of Lake Hood. Turnigan would stay as it is. Like Hood would stay as it is. I was explaining the foundation of my disagreement. Does that help?
It 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 does help. It doesn't help me move forward in that I I to continue to take schools off the list that are dealing with the same issues, they have the same questions, they they have the same levels of levels of support that they want to provide their kids, that they want to provide our our students with special needs. I mean, these are, these are all, like I said, you could replace one for the other. So my question would be, are we looking to remove, continue to remove schools from the list? Are we looking to not close any schools? I'm I'm just going to throw it out there.
My response would be it's any board members prerogative to bring up any concerns they may have. I have been deeply concerned about other schools that were brought up in this process. Hundred percent. I agree that Baxter, much of what could I said here could be said about Baxter. I raised my concerns about the fullness of some of the receiving schools from Baxter with the administration and they reviewed it. I ultimately decided not to submit an amendment, but I wouldn't necessarily be opposed to another board member bringing Baxter up. But for the purposes of this amendment, I felt that the Lake Hood closure when the Turnigan facility to my mind would be a better charter school facility. That seemed relevant. There has not, in this process, been an opportunity for board members to bring actual suggestions to the fore. We've had opportunities for questions and work sessions, but there's never been much of an actionable time for board members until this moment. So just to to double down, this is not a recommendation to do anything with Turnigan. It would stay as its own school. Like Hood would stay as its own facility at this at this moment in time, should the board support the amendment.
Member Higgins.
I oh, sorry.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you. I I'm interested in hearing from administration as to, I guess I just want to check in and confirm that we still feel like Lake Hood is with the other feedback and conversation we've heard from the board tonight is want to reaffirm that Lake Hood stands as the best possible recommendation for rightsizing in this particular area of town. It is Northwest Anchorage. And I guess yeah, I guess I'll have that question first. And so, thanks.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. I guess to start off, as we've shared with the board in the past, that there are more candidates for closure consolidation than there are on the list, even when the list were seven. We do have a capacity issue and we provided rationale and information for why these would be good candidates. But as was shared earlier, at this point, it's the board's prerogative to explore amendments or revisions to the list based off of everything that we've shared to date. Mr. Anderson, is there anything you'd like to add particularly about the Lake Hood facility?
No, I I think Member Lessons spoke repeatedly about Turnigan as a better option for a charter school. I don't think that's part of the the amendment for tonight, but the board certainly always has the prerogative to remove a school.
And Mr. Chair, if I might. So with my question of the way, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the the intentionality with a board member not suggesting at this point in the process that we should add a new school to the list that hasn't been considered. And so that that much I appreciate. I I am having trouble separating that there will be another school and that they could in a year's time, they could might come to be the best candidate in this portion of our municipality. And so I don't know if Turnigan or if there's another candidate that makes a better sense. And I've heard nothing from administration to indicate that they've strayed from their recommendation. And so I think where I would land is trusting administration's recommendation and then really doubling down and spending my energy and advocating our legislature to take the necessary steps, not just to address education funding, but to address why young people and families are leaving Alaska and why we're experiencing that migration year after year after year. Times well over ten at this point. And so I think that's where I'll spend my energy, but I do appreciate the amendment. I don't know that I have enough information to say that this isn't the right and most appropriate decision at this point. Thanks.
Go ahead to ask as a follow up to the administration. One of the things that's been asserted in a number of emails is that this will completely utilize all the classrooms at Turnigan. And I'm wondering if if that's known or not.
Sure, I can answer that. I know there's at least one. I'll look at the back at the senior director. I think I I did brief in the work session and we briefed two weeks ago that the SBBS program had actually dropped down to five. And and it is so small at this point that it easily can be have students move to closer SBBS programs to their homes. So quite honestly, the SBBS is not really a factor anymore, and that would free up additional space as well.
When you say it's not a factor, do you mean the SBBS program would not be going to Turnigan or it would just take one classroom?
No, we briefed it two weeks ago that those, is it four now? Four students? Okay, there'd be four classrooms with no SBBS there. But the five SBBS students, I know there's multiple numbers out there. I understand exactly why there's multiple numbers. But the, you know, social media has a lot of facts on it. And and sometimes they're they're a little bit off. And and so I understand the confusion, but it is going to be down to five next year because some of them age out. And Special Ed has looked at those five students, and I think it's inappropriate to talk about individual student placement. But there are other programs where they can easily be moved, where we wouldn't need to move them to Tarmigan. So that program as it stands, I'm sorry, Turnigan. Sorry, I'm getting confused now. Sorry, I'm getting confused now with naming other schools. Sorry, Turnigan. Um, I, I don't, I don't think there's a plan right now to move that program to Turnigan, and there hasn't been for a couple of weeks since we last briefed it.
And so would it be correct in assuming that, that after consolidation of Lake Hood into, um, Turnigan, there still would be classrooms that could be used for various purposes?
Correct, for classrooms.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Member Higgins?
I just want to respond to Member Wilson's question in regards to Baxter. I intend to propose with Baxter that it be removed for the same reasons. We heard a lot of testimony in regards to it. I was at Baxter listening to, um, staff and parents, activities associated with it. And they have the ability to absorb stuff from Nunaka Valley. They're trying to work together, they realize the closure, and I just think it's, it's not in the best interest of the kids and the program. And I think there's an alternative. So your, your question is, does it include Baxter? It will for me. I will be requesting Baxter be included. But I was going to do it on a separate motion, and I know that, uh, we're, you know, just wanted to respond to that.
Other comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to put a vote on your screen. The vote is on Lessons Amendment Number One, basically to strike Lake Hood from the list of consolidations. And Member Pack, if you wish to give an advisory vote?
I know.
And the amendment fails, I believe, four to, oh, uh, five to two. We are back on the main motion. We have any other comment, or Member Donnelly?
Um, Mr. President, uh, move on. I guess we're moving on to my amendments that are appropriate. Okay. I move to strike the words Fire Lake from the section labeled Recommendation and to make a corresponding change by replacing the word four with three to read as follows. Is the administration's recommendation that the school board approve and authorize the superintendent to implement the closure of the following schools at the end of the 2024-25 school year in order to right-size the district's infrastructure, Baxter, Lake Hood, and Nunaka Valley Elementary Schools. Each of the three buildings would be repurchased for an existing ASD charter school. Essentially, this just takes Fire Lake off the list of schools to close. And if it's seconded, I'll speak to it.
Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Lessons?
Mr. President?
Yes, if you'd like to speak to your motion.
Thank you. I just think that there's, um, a tremendous amount of potential for growth in this specific area. We've heard that there is planned 130 new housing units already going in there. I understand the administration's arguments that it still wouldn't be a sufficient number of students to fill up Fire Lake, but I do believe that there's going to be more momentum for affordable housing in the Anchorage area. And this is one of the few areas where we're going to see the growth of housing. So I think it's premature to look to closing down Fire Lake at this time because of the potential growth there.
Discussion? Member Higgins?
Yeah, I had a chance to view it, and, and, you know, you got a school there, you know, it's not full, but then you got a, um, a charter school, which is about the same size. It was kind of interesting, and we're looking at replacement. I, I just see utilization of that school in a larger capacity makes more sense rather than just replace one with the other. And there's other options with it. So, um, I know how the community feels, we're pretty strong, and I realize the impact it's going to have as it continues to grow. And, um, um, I just think it's not in the best interest of kids and keep in the involvement of the parents.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll end similarly as I did on the previous amendment, that I would prefer to, to focus my energy not on trying to find a better candidate because I, I don't think this board will be well-suited in trying to find candidates that are more deserving of, um, rightsizing than others. And I think all our schools are amazing and doing amazing things. That, that portion of the conversation really isn't what administration is referencing with this memorandum. I, I think the, the better question is to address maybe Member Don, Donnelly's underlying points, which is, it relates to potential housing. You know, I, I think that I could express similar concerns with East Anchorage, where it's one of the most affordable places to live in the entire municipality. And if this memorandum passes, we'll be ceding additional property, which could be used for housing at some point in the future, um, should the municipality decide it. And, um, we, we might need additional capacity in East Anchorage someday. But I think knowing that the building won't remain dormant and unused is a factor, and knowing it'll have a, another quality program in it is a factor. But then also knowing that, I, I hope this board will join me in advocating for the changes we need to bring families and young people back to Alaska and retain those that we do have, which will stall not just future conversations, but also will allow us to revisit this conversation. Is probably the best area of focus for this board because, um, paring down this list only delays the conversation for these sections of our municipality. What the only solution to addressing the conversation of rightsizing and the question I know I've been asked, and I'm sure other board members have too, as to how long will this be a topic of conversation, really involves legislative solutions to bring people back to our state and retain young people from leaving. That is the solution. Housing is, is definitely a piece of that. Affordable housing is definitely a piece of that, but only that's possible by addressing a state long-term fiscal plan, and only that's possible by investing in K-12 education. Thanks.
Other discussion? Member Watson?
Uh, I appreciate the, the making of this motion. I will support it. Uh, many of, um, my sentiments in the previous amendment apply, uh, to the Fire Lake facility. I appreciate the administration's, um, you know, analysis of the timeline for new housing development. The land was certainly cleared next to the school, and I visited it on Friday. I think supporting it will allow me to sleep better tonight, and I think it's what will, in this case, best serve the students at that school.
Other discussion or comments? Seeing no hands, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to put a vote to your screen. Member Pack, if you have an advisory vote?
Yes.
By a vote of four to three, we have removed Fire Lake from the list of closures. This puts us back to the main motion. Member Higgins?
I don't know if you were able to draft it or not, what, what I was, uh, uh, what I'm going to do is move to strike the word Bartlett. I'm, you know, Baxter, but, but we're going to leave the high school. Just relax a little bit, people. Uh, from the section labeled Recommendation and to make a corresponding change by replacing the word four with, well, three with two, I guess. To read as follows, and it will call the same identical language that is in the motion from, um, that Dave Donnelly has presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, um, to remove Baxter from the list. Discussion? Member Higgins?
This is the one I thought would pass easily. Come, I'm glad Fire Lake went. But, um, I mean, this school, it's got the special ed issues. It's got the Title I, it's one of two of the three in that area, the Title I schools. It's, it, it is, it has the ability to absorb, um, Nunaka Valley into it. They have the additional space there for the program that was discussed, whether you want to do preschool or something else. It's just a perfect fit for that. We're going to load up some of the schools like Chester Valley heavily and make that a ninety-plus percent. It, it, this one, um, heavily commitment from the community, the, the, the support for the special ed. I think we heard a good emotional response in how we're going to hurt kids by transferring them at this time after what, everything they've done. It is going to hurt the community, it's going to hurt the kids, in my opinion. We need the kids involved. I want those kids to have the Title I funds, uh, the resources that, that, within that type of community and not to divide them up so that they're not out there. It means a lot to those kids. It means a lot for parental involvement, for academics. Everything about it is a doable solution without moving it out. There were ways to move things in and to, and to accomplish what you want to accomplish. So to me, it doesn't make sense that Bartlett would even be on that list, just like, you know, the, I think, huh? Uh, Baxter, okay. I'm, I'm not going after the high school, I promise you. It's not the case, uh, within that. It sounds like it, but it's not. But I just, it, it's being responsive to what the community needs and what the kids need in that school. I just think it's the wrong thing to do, and I'm, I'm hoping that this one will not be added to that list. Thank you.
Other comments or questions? I would like to ask of the administration, and I realize this is a lot to ask on the spur of the moment, but do you see the possibility of students being moved to Baxter if it is taken off the list?
Mr. Anderson? We've only seen a decline in the last several years. So it's really hard to project. Um, as I briefed earlier today, about thirty-four percent of all the students in Anchorage choose a school outside of the zone. In the Baxter area, it was closer to fifty percent. And it was a little bit less than fifty off the top of my head, it could have been forty-six. Um, but it was a pretty high number that chose an optional or some other school from that area. With parent choice being so free, it would be difficult to make any sort of accurate projection as to whether they would leave the school they're at to come back to Baxter.
As a, uh, follow-up question, um, if Nunaka Valley stayed on the list, but Baxter did not, would that be a situation where students would have to be bused? Or would you, or I guess to back up a little bit, you, would you still see the destination for Nunaka students being the same as was outlined in the rightsizing plan to begin with?
Um, right now, from Nunaka, there would be fifty-seven going to Russian Jack, thirty-nine going to Chester Valley. You know, I don't know that that, those locations would need to change. You know, we've looked at Chester Valley. It does get pretty close to Max with, uh, obviously some, that whole area, if, if a charter school were to move into Baxter that happened to be also an adequate neighborhood school. We moved a charter school, um, from a, an unacceptable location or certainly not optimal location to, um, a, a school that, that we were able to put them in a couple of years ago. Overnight, their enrollment went up by a hundred. So what we, what we have seen, and that's only in one case, um, is that when a school can move in that provides a K-five experience, a lot of the same students that normally would have walked to Baxter may choose to continue walking there regardless of what the school name is. But we have not done a survey with every parent, um, to be able to accurately provide that information.
Thank you. Other discussion? Questions by board members? Seeing the hands, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to put the vote up. Member Pack, if you wish to make a recommendation?
I'll abstain from this one.
By a vote of four to three, the amendment has passed. It removes Baxter from the list of closures. That brings us back to the main menu. Or, I'm sorry, the main motion. Any further discussion? Seeing no one raising a hand or turning on their microphone, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to put the, oh, Member Donnelly?
Thought there was going to be more discussion. Mr. President, I'd move to add to the memorandum the following language. Before the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, before April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the superintendent shall report to the, to the school board on the merits of the new Inlet View School once construction is completed, utilizing a K-through-eight format. Here you go. Um, I guess I could have held off moving it till I talked to it, but.
Is there a second?
Second for discussion.
I appreciate that.
Moved and seconded.
Romick's significantly overcrowded after a move of the sixth graders there. We've got a brand-new school right next to Romick, within a mile, I think, of Romick. It's that the projected capacity has about a hundred positions. I, uh, places for almost up to a hundred students is what I heard at one meeting here. And Mr. Anderson can give me more specifics on that. So there's a lot of capacity there. And we could take some of the crowding out of Romick. Uh, we've got the potential here to almost immediately relieve that overcrowding at Romick by utilizing Inlet View in a K-through-eight format. For years, we've, before a lot of you guys got here, Abbott Loop was going to go K-through-eight, um, because it's a national movement. Uh, when we had the experts here looking at rightsizing the first time, they said, yeah, that's what we're doing with most uh, school districts nationally, nationally, we're looking at K-through-eight. And I just am a huge fan of that format. We've got two K-through-eight schools here. We've got, um, Girdwood and Northern Lights ABC. I think they're very successful, um, because of the continuity of the kids, much like in Polaris, for going through those really tough middle school years with kids they have cycled through with and, and new kids coming in. It's, I think it's a really positive, positive format. It's, I think it's a really positive, positive format. So the district was moving in that direction with Abbott Loop before we made the decision, the board, the board made the decision to shut it down as an experiment. And I really think it's a viable option for relieving the overcrowding at Inlet, the overcrowding at Romick that we're faced with right now, which we know is really serious. So that's, that's the reason. And it would, all this would do is ask the superintendent to examine the question and come back in four months and, and let us know what the administration thinks of it.
Other discussion?
Question.
Uh, Member Bellamy?
So Inlet View has the IB program. Does that, is that, do they, I mean, what will that do to that program?
Great question, Member Bellamy. So this is all hypothetical, but theoretically, the district could move towards funding a middle years program. So that would be the six through eight international baccalaureate for those students. Again, this is hypothetical, we've not done any analysis on, on that. But that would be something that I would ask the board to consider. With that said, there is a pretty high cost to being an IB school, so we'd need to weigh that. But that's what I would recommend if they were in a building that's currently international baccalaureate and we would go through that application process.
Member Higgins?
Yeah, Mike, I, I like the concept. I like dealing with the over, overcapacity issues in the middle school. I just, my concern here is that I think Inlet View, even when it's, you know, with the revision, the demand for that, for the people that want to get in there is, is pretty substantial. And so I don't know how the impact of trying to add six, seven, eight is going to do, because that school isn't built big enough, I don't think, to go from K to eight. And still with all the program that it's got, that's my concern. I, I agree with the concept. I think I would prefer for the administration to come forward and give us ideas on what they think can be done. There may be other schools, other locations, but I do think it needs to be addressed. But I'd rather have some of them suggestions on how to do it.
And Mr. President? And I may just add that my understanding is that most of Inlet View's actually zones to central middle school. So what we would be embarking on is a domino effect when it comes to middle school capacity. I do recognize that middle schools are currently overcapacity in some instances, but there are bubbles that we do anticipate. And there will be a time where we're grappling with, how do we manage our operational footprint? If we're essentially adding a middle school and we anticipate enrollment declines in the long term. So that, that's just something food for thought if the board were to move forward with an amendment like this. It wouldn't necessarily relieve Romick. It would probably more, be more relief to Central, which may have its own enrollment challenges ten years down the line.
Other questions or comments? Member Donnelly? Member Wilson?
I actually agree with Member Higgins in that I, I would not feel comfortable voting to, for Inlet View to become a K through eight school without additional information and research and, oh. I'm just not comfortable voting on it tonight. In support of it, I should say.
Um, Mr. President?
Member Donnelly?
Just to clarify, the motion I made is different than what's on the piece of paper in front of you. It, it doesn't, doesn't say to do it. It just asks the superintendent to come back and give us an analysis in four months of the merits of it. So it is not to actually do it as it's in the original draft, but to simply request the superintendent to examine the issue and see if it's a viable solution to Romick or it's a viable option. And come back by April fifteenth with some sort of report to us.
The question to the administration, April fifteenth would be, would that be after staffing for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is completed? So I guess my question revolves around the timing of that.
Yeah, to President Halloman, if we stick with our current staffing calendar, the majority of our staffing process that unfolds over the spring wraps up by usually about the third week of March. So at that point, we would have placed any displaced teachers, considered the bulk of voluntary transfers and begun our new hire process. And so by April fifteenth, we're really looking more towards the end of the year and the bulk of staffing is completed at that point.
Member Donnelly?
But Mr. President, the school won't be completed yet. So I don't think it's going to be ready for occupancy during that next school year. So that's still a year more off.
Yeah. Yeah, occupancy would be in the twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I for some reason thought they were going to really do some fast work out there. I apologize. Any other comments or questions on this amendment? If not, I'll ask Ms., oh, Member Wilson?
Just clarification, is, would this not be an RFI? Rather than?
This would actually direct the superintendent to report to us.
So difference between that and RFI is?
We're passing a motion to ask him to consider a specific option and report back to us. Member Bellamy?
So I have a similar concern. I, I don't know how we can, I think we can ask the superintendent to do a lot of things, but I would want to hear from those families. I mean, the school has invested a lot in its structure. And what we may not see as impacts might be impacts. So I, I would want more information on it, whether or not it's possible. But to add it to the amendment in this manner, I would be voting no.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing no one raising a hand or turning on their mic, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to put the vote before you. Member Pack, if you wish to make an advisory vote?
Yes.
That amendment is defeated by a vote of five to two. So we have not passed that amendment. We are back on the main question again. Anyone else have comment or any amendments? Seeing the microphones lighting up, except Miss Bellamy, and I don't think you can say anything. Or hands being raised, I'll ask Ms. Sullivan to put the main motion before you. This is whether or not to approve memorandum seventy-three, the ASD rightsizing plan as amended. Member Pack, if you wish to make an advisory vote?
A very painful yes.
Well said. Member Wilson?
Point of information, Mr. Chair, I don't know if it's appropriate now or after the fact, but I would hope we can have unanimous consent for Ms. Sullivan to adopt conforming language throughout the memorandum, given the number of amendments that have occurred.
I'll ask the board if there's any objection to changes where we may have failed to do the right math, technical changes that do not change the, the primary intent of the motion, if need be. And that would allow us to go ahead and vote on this. There may have to be some fours that are changed to threes, et cetera, et cetera. But this would, this would close Nanaca and, and Lykhood. I didn't want to say the wrong thing, so, yeah. If we will, go ahead and vote on that. By a vote of five to two, we have adopted the right sizing plan as amended. Thank you. That brings us to memorandum zero seven four, which I'm going to rule myself out of order in having that placed as an action item. That really should have appeared on this agenda as a non-action item. So it will.
Mr. President, as for Robert's rules, I would move to postpone this item indefinitely. Thanks.
There is a motion to postpone this motion indefinitely, it's moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, happy to discuss. This isn't a relevant, timely, or in my opinion, important topic for the board right now. Given our budget and other challenges, we can talk about this next year. Thanks.
Member Higgins?
Oh, me?
If you have something.
Yeah, the other one. We, we, we should be advocating for schools with Juno. And we, and that's a travel expense. We have nothing in there right now. And there were some other issues out there, so that's what this proposal is. The idea, if we were voting it up or voting it down, but postponing it indefinitely is just another way of voting it down. So I think that we've got to be the lobby group to the, to Juno. I think we need to play that role. I think there were some other activities we've talked about before. I'd be glad to go through it, but I'm recommending a vote.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Nothing in this motion to postpone prevents us from joining our lobbyists and the superintendent in Juno. So I'm, I'm happy to say that all those rights are preserved and we can still, will be effective when we travel to Juno. Thanks.
And, and I'll put in the, the reason I think this has come up is we did take the action of removing any money from the budget for board travel. But we have continued to have some requests. And, and what's happened is the administration has said they do have money allocated for travel that the board could make use of. And it's, it's placed me in the position of, have we said to the public, we're not going to spend any money on board travel? But then if I turn around and approve travel for a board member, to me, that's, that's not being transparent to the public. So the, I, I guess I would seek guidance one way or the other. Does the board wish to not reimburse any board members for travel, period? Or do we want to allocate a modest amount? I don't think this would be enough to really cover going to conferences, at least not any out of state. But it would cover some travel back and forth to Juno. And so if we, if we don't vote on this, I, I do need guidance from the board on what they consider to be proper. Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I intended to, to move the motion to postpone indefinitely to act as that guidance you need, that this isn't something the board should be expending money on right now, given our, our budget challenges, at least from district funds. We can and should consider traveling at our own expense as other districts do and other school boards do. But this, again, conversation isn't timely or reasonable, given the other options available to this board. And I think we can take up this conversation next year. Would urge a yes vote to postpone indefinitely. Thanks.
Other comments, Member Bellamy?
Yeah, so last year, I think the answer to anybody who wants to travel should just be no. We don't have the money this year. I mean, that's what we, that's what we said. And, and I think we can revisit that at another point, some, some other point in time. But now, do I have places I want to go? I do, but will I make them? Probably not. I might make one or two on my own expense. But I think our, what we said to the community when we approved the budget is that we would forego travel for this school year. So until this school year is over and until we revisit that decision, I think we need to kind of hold steady. So it's a no for me.
Member Higgins?
I, I don't mind paying my trip to Juno, but I'm going to do it because it's important. And it's important for kids and important for the school district that we connect with the legislature over these issues. There, there are other issues out there. The NSBA is what bothers me the most, is that it's going to be focused on AI and other issues. And I think it's critical that, from my standpoint, the superintendent and probably chief academic officer would love for them to go to that one, because that's out there glowing on what we're going to do. But it seems to me that some board members should attend that because we've got our connection with, with Cube and with the law school districts and the others. And we get a lot of benefits from it. We've gotten a lot in the past from the, everything from the vendors to the programs. And I just think that we have an obligation to, to, it's just part of our job.
Other comments? Seeing none, I will ask Ms. Sullivan to put the question on your screen. This is to table the motion to add, to do a budget transfer of a thousand dollars into board travel. To table indefinitely. And by a vote of five to two, this has been tabled indefinitely. That completes our action items. Does anyone wish to discuss non-action items? Seeing the hands, that would bring us to the superintendent update.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Within our community, given the decision of this evening, there's a mixture of emotions ranging from relief to emotional devastation. So I think the most appropriate thing that I could say is that we're here for you as Team ASD, regardless of what the outcome was for individual communities tonight. And we need to focus on an intentional and compassionate transition for those communities that are affected. So that will be my top priority moving forward, given tonight's decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions to the superintendent? Seeing none, school board and, uh, school board comments. I believe I've been starting to my left, I will start to my right with Member Bellamy.
No comment.
Member lessons?
Thank you for the robust public process. To the board members who participated, to the administration who prepared a challenging slate of options and to the community members who engaged in it in some capacity. Thank you.
Member Wilson?
This has been an incredibly difficult night as a board member. And I, I really, I hope that community members continue to advocate for education at the legislative level. The need for the increase in the BSA is, is so incredibly important. I, I, I really don't want to continue to discuss and vote on what we have to take away and would love to start changing the dialogue to what we can provide, what we can provide in addition to what our fabulous staff and educators are providing our kids now.
Member Donnelly?
Yeah, I've previously raised my concern about some of our. Yeah, I've previously raised my concern about some of our algebra two classes not having textbooks. And I want to renew that concern. I, it's. I've. You know, I talk to my own kids and it's really challenging for them in algebra two without a textbook. It's, it, you could, in a textbook, it's just a more substantive useful tool than trying to be online, going back and forth, back and forth, trying to figure out what to do. And I think our children, our students deserve on something as complex as math and algebra two. To have a textbook. And maybe it's just having some available for the kids to have a particular challenge with you doing it on the internet. But I I think we need to find a solution to this. Um, I can't imagine doing it, uh, without a textbook, um, and. And there's no handouts available either, apparently, too. I mean, it's just something that they're just completely reliant on being on a website and trying to figure it out. Um, so I remain very concerned about that. Thank you.
Member Jacobs, no comment. Member Higgins.
I know this, I agree with member lessons. This has been an extremely stressful period, um, much more so. And it, when you walk away somewhat frustrated and somewhat happy, that's usually the way it usually ends. That means something good came out of it, but. Um, um, my concern is something that, uh, Mister Anderson raised a little while ago. That when you're so distracted with this, you're not focused on all the other issues that we've got. We've got so many issues in the school district. That I think we need to be addressing, and we just haven't been focused on any of that. We we couldn't. And I appreciate that because I appreciate the feedback, I'm, uh, from all the parents. Um, and we had a chance to attend the schools and, uh, and getting the kind of information out of God. It was very beneficial. And the voices were heard. I think that's what we were hoping to accomplish. Um, and then beyond that, it's just a matter of coming out with a list of all the other things that need to get done, and it's a lot. Because we are flooded with, um, challenges because of state funding. And it's distracting us from what we should be doing and that is looking for opportunities. So, um, thank you for everyone who spoke out.
Thank you. Um, to wrap up, I, uh. Do want to apologize to the staff and students at Baxter and that. Like hood, um, I know it's, it's just, it's. The neck, I'm sorry. Um, it is painful and. I say that as someone who taught in a school and like there were several times where. The district enacted policies that sort of wiped out what we were doing. And and that was painful, but that's nothing like finding out your school is gonna be closed. Uh, I know it feels intensely personal to those folks and there isn't any way to change that. It is personal. Uh, I, I think the vast majority of our staff goes in. And works really hard every day with whatever they've got. To do the best they can, and we've heard the parents come forward and talk about it. And explain it. Um, but there is a reality as the number of students keeps drifting down. It becomes remarkably inefficient to continue to keep this many buildings open. Uh, and I think until the. Uh, population decline reverses. We will be back doing this next year, uh, and the year after. Uh, because it simply. It simply doesn't make sense to try to staff a school, an elementary school. It's got sixty or seventy kids in it, or seventy or eighty kids in it. Um. So it's a reality, but it it doesn't make it any less painful for the people involved in it. So I. Um. Do know that the administration is going to work very hard to make this transition happen as painlessly as they can. To try to take those best elements and move them, uh, that doesn't always work. So we will be watching and trying to learn from this, because we will be coming back to it again and again. Do want to thank everyone that came to testify. We do hear you. We can't always alleviate some of the things. And it is just a really difficult choice. And, uh. I. I will, to a time, I think, when Alaska begins to really support public education again. And we can begin to look at what we can add to the experience for our students. And how we can improve things on a day-to-day basis and not simply continue to keep shaving people off, shaving programs off. Uh. In a, in an effort to come in under a budget that keeps getting. Hit by inflation year after year. Thank you all, and, uh, if there is no objection. We are in adjournment.